Hi. Go ahead and call our Sandy City Council work session to order. We'll start by doing a review of this evening's city council agenda. A pause for normal each time somebody wants to interject any questions for staff to prepare for. Maybe he wants to inform council something. With that, so obviously we do a roll call changes to the agendas. Are there going to be any suggested changes to tonight's agenda?
Yeah, maybe. I, I think we show under committee council reports, the memo. Will that be presented by chair?
So, Councilor Sheldon offered to say a few words about as the lay is on to planning question. That's why it was.
I just like to have some time to discuss that.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's the point of it.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, well, is that for us to have an open discussion? Okay. And, okay. With that, I will then go to public comment. Jeff, has there been any online applications for public comment?
No, ma'am, there haven't.
Any here yet today?
Not yet.
Okay. And then we'll go to our consent agenda. It says our city council meeting minutes from our October fourth meeting. Any questions or concerns on that? All right, we'll then go into ordinances to our public hearing on sixteen three seven O Royal Lane annexation. Any questions on that? You sent me the script on that. You haven't printed it, have you?
Oh, no, ma'am, I'm sorry. I can try to do that before.
If we can, if not, we can now just pull it up on my computer. Old business special service contract program grant awards. Then nothing under new business. We'll have a report from our city manager, which includes discussing the selection of the interview panel for planning commission applicants as well as a memo that will lead to a discussion that came from Chair Crosby of our planning commission. We will then have our committee and council reports in adjourned after the evening. With that, let's go ahead and get our work session going on our wastewater system improvements communications plan. George, you want to kick us off on that?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council. So tonight, we, we have this work session scheduled for you to talk about wastewater communications and ask questions about the project and kind of help us strategize communicating on the project going forward. I wanted to just briefly do some introductions. I don't know if you've met, everyone's met Kim Marshall. She's a part of our communications team from Barney and Worth on this project. Our oversight committee members know her well. Rob Lee from Leeway Engineering, our owners rep is also here tonight. And then Mike Walker, Public Works Director. Kim's gonna kind of help facilitate this conversation. We have some key questions for council and some other information to share. We, we kind of worked on this internally and with the oversight committee preparing for this, this work session. I know the council's kind of, has been looking forward to talking about the project in general, but more specifically, as we kind of advance into the project and get into these other phases and work that involves a lot of community partners and agencies and the like, that communication is going to be key as it has been, but even more so going forward. I don't think I need to introduce the project at all. We're talking about our very large wastewater system improvements project, largest in the city history. We're underway on the first phase, investing in our collection system and the existing treatment plant. The solutions are varied and complex as well. And that's one of the challenges with this project is communicating complex permitting and working with several different, you know, federal and state agencies, working on a lot of different components from a collection system inflow and infiltration issues, which, you know, has his own communication challenges and describing that problem to people. The MBR plant and of course, the proposal for a Sandy River discharge. So I wanted to go ahead and turn this over to Kim, who I said would be facilitating, but as a work session, this is really designed to have interaction from the city council as a discussion and reflection and advice and direction to staff too. So, Kim, she's all yours.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for having me here. As Jordan said, I'm going to facilitate have a few slides, but for the most part, really want this to be a discussion. So moving into, oh, can everybody see the slides, okay?
Almost.
No. They're not coming through. Oh, there we go.
Now, okay, can you see the, everyone sees the agenda?
Yes.
Yep, okay, great. So first we'll start with the outline of the projects. So talking about the communication values and guiding principles that we've been using since the beginning several years ago and that we're committed to using throughout the long haul of the project. Talk about some of the key messages, audiences and strategies that we're employing throughout the communications plan. Talk about our next focus on online engagement and Jeffrey Prady is going to help me with that section. Talk a little bit about how council can engage and then turn it over to Rob Lee to talk about kind of what's happening now, what's going on with the project today. So like I said, the communication values and guiding principles, this is what's been guiding our strategy since the beginning. These are things like being transparent. You'll see that kind of on the website where we have all of the reports of all of our communication with groups who are interested in the project. Includes all of the information about where things have been going. We want to stay on message with a consistent tone. This is a long haul project. We're here for the long run. So making sure that we have those messages defined and the consistent tone throughout the project. Proactive, staying ahead of unfolding events. We want to be pushing information out to the public rather than them coming to us with issues. It'd be factual, scientific, responsive when appropriate while being aware of limited resources. So being strategic about how to be responsive with that. Be focused, strategic, efficient and persistent with those key messages. And the, the real question that we have for you is, are these the communication values, guiding principles that you think that this project should be founded on? Are these meetings in the community or is there something else that we should be, we should be thinking about?
Looking for a discussion. I, I, I like these. I think these, these hit pretty much where my, my mind is, especially on the consistent tone and be very proactive and staying ahead of unfolding events versus reactive. But I think these hit a lot of our, I was about to say values right out of the headline. Yeah, what do you guys think?
They fit what I've been trying to do all along and I hope that we continue. But I see several there that already are high on my list of things that I'd like to see us stay on and, and the others are very right on message. I'm not so sure that we have stayed on a level effect on each of those upper points. There have been some times when we've been more proactive rather than proactive in some cases. So I would say let's, let's kind of focus on some of the things that we're kind of trying to keep up with and with the rest of it. I love it.
The, the only thing I'd bring up that I've heard from this council, particularly I think from our last meeting is, is we kind of have two communication strategies, right? We have one to our internal rate payers that are our sandy, you know, residents, neighbors, rate payers. And then we have stakeholders who are outside of our community that are, you know, either they live around the outfall location or they somehow their business or properties intersect with the project and there's a communication plan for them as well. And I just know that I, at least my feeling from what I hear council talk about is, is the need for balance there and not to, you know, right now, and I think a lot of it's because of the stage of the project, but a lot of our communication right now are to non-residents and just to make sure that we're not forgetting about our residents, rate payers as we communicate.
Great, thank you. That's excellent feedback. So looking at what these key messages are that we are putting out into the community and that these are kind of our three key things that everything falls under. The first one is always talking about momentum and progress, especially as construction has started. Construction's even completing in some areas. Basin eight infiltration inflow work is, is nearly complete with basin two getting started. Construction on the existing treatment plant is underway contributes to a healthier Tickle Creek and permitting studies are in progress. So this has been a big push, both internal, both with the internal stakeholders, mayor that you mentioned, as well as the external stakeholders, talking about how things are, are moving and progress is being made. The second, and this one has been a big focus with the external stakeholders especially, is that scientific and factual concentration on what's best for the environment. So everything that is being done with the outfall is being put through rigorous scientific and engineering study. That includes the studies that are underway right now. I know Ross has mentioned these a little bit at the end as well, but there's a mixing zone study, the discharge alternative study, the temperature mitigation study. So we talk about those a lot right now in our communications and will continue to do so throughout the project. And third, and this is more on the internal stakeholder side, is that strategic financing to keep rates affordable. So that sixty-three million dollars or so coming from WIFIA. That loan is closing in November, sixteen and a half million from SRF. Those papers, I believe, Rob, have already been signed. And then of course, the fourteen point seven million dollars in ARPA funding that just is key. So those are, those tend to be our three key messages as we go through and everything falls under, under those. And then we talk about.
Can you come back?
Yeah, go ahead. You can start now.
I just wanted to say that part of our motivation for having this work session is not this, these guys or who those guys are taking, are taking these messages out there, but, but we have to be on point for these messages as well. So as you're looking at them and reading them, make sure that you have questions. You got to be able to talk to these bullet points. If you get off topic, then that consistency falls apart and we end up with a, a lot more difficulty.
And on that, the, the one thing I don't see on this page for key messages is the mandate. Is, is, you know, that we're going through this because DEQ has mandated us to have a new facility by twenty twenty-four. Now, you know, there are going to be a lot of discussions as far as whether or not that mandate should exist or should not or whatever, but it doesn't matter. The truth is, is that it's there and that it exists, right? And so we have this mandate and so we have a problem. And we have worked proactively to find solutions and we are, and, and, and all the points that I see on this page are all the movement that our council and our staff and our team has made since that mandate has been down.
I like that. So it's a real good addition. Just kind of put that as the overarching message.
Yeah, overarching message on how this, this is the problem, this is the mandate, and then these are how we are working to the solution.
Where that's going to come into key and you probably know this, but is what, is when rates go up, people want to know why, right? And so we have to start with the why, with the mandate and then everything else.
Yeah, start with the why. Any other questions about these key messages or comments?
Yeah, I have one. And the mayor brought it up earlier and I guess I'm thinking about how this might fix between the stakeholders that are outside of the city, how we address them and the citizens that are inside the boundaries and how we address them with, with these different, which this looks like is a pretty broad and pretty basic, basic kinds of conversation. Add the overreaching one that we just discussed, but there is a certainly a need to make sure our citizens know that we are trying to make this, to keep up with the growth that we have. I'm not sure just all of the different statements that might be addressed in this, but there are, is a different conversation between people who are paying the rates and are flushing the toilets and those who are concerned about the water going into Sandman, Sandy River. Although I think that people and the citizens are concerned about the Sandy River being quality and clean. I just wonder if we have the citizens' message described as well as we should.
So a message around addressing growth, is that what I mean?
I'm not sure that growth is the entire message, but it is that we are trying to make the city as responsive to the growth that we have had in the last ten years. I don't want to go into all the specifics about how fast we're.
It's kind of, it's a subcategory of the mandate, right? So the mandate is we have to fix it, but as part of fixing it, we're fixing it for the future as well.
And well, for the long term. Yeah, I mean, you know, in, I, I think it's worth, at one point, you know, you could have made the decision to have updated, upgraded just the existing plant and kicked the can down the road for fifteen years and then have to go through this all over again, right? And so this decision was made is let's not just kick the can down the road, let's tackle it.
So, so I'm hearing more a key message around how this is a long-term vision and planning strategy.
For the sake of the citizens within this, the city. I think that's really crucial that people understand that we're not just doing this because we're forced to by outside agencies, although that is part of that process. This is something that the city really needs to accomplish in terms of being able to respond to our growth, respond to the conditions within our boundary.
I would kind of add on to that by saying that, you know, part of the key messages are kind of how did we get here? And I think it's really, you know, the way I've tried to explain it to people when, when they've asked is the fact that, you know, we assumed we were going to continue to be able to go to Tickle Creek. And all of a sudden, you know, and then we spent a bunch of money to do a master plan and that master plan told us, you know, that now, no, you can't continue to go to Tickle Creek. You've got to now, you know, take your waste three miles down street or, you know, to another location. And getting our waste three miles away is not, you know, anywhere near as cheap as keep continuing to do it at Tickle Creek. And that's the, you know, the reason that we've had to increase rates the way we have and, and pursue this alternative with the mandate and all that. And so I think, you know, having that easy explanation when people can see that, you know, all of a sudden, and I don't exactly know the miles, but you know, basically, you know, we all know poop flows downhill, but it doesn't do so, you know, free. It costs a lot of money to get it three miles away. So that's the biggest.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing, athlete, we got to turn around and pump it uphill.
Right, whatever, I'm not quite sure of all the, the technical difficulties. But I mean, that's the point is that, you know, having to, to, you know, that's the whole rationale for why our rates have gone up is that all of a sudden we're not, you know, focusing on Tickle Creek. Now we have to go so far away and it, and that is, you know, and that's going to be needed for the growth of Sandy. And so that message is a pretty easy visual for people to understand. And I think that, you know, the easier we keep it, the, you know, better they understand it, so.
For the record.
And I think the way I've always looked at it as well is the rules have changed on us. We've been here a hundred years. You know, our city has, right? And we've always been discharging in some fashion or, you know, that direction in that way. And with the three rivers rule and everything else that downstream from us, but those new, those weren't in effect fifty years ago or thirty years ago. Or, you know, we, we've been told we had to change. And that's part of what happened. So in doing that, but keeping it simple is, I think, is the best message, staying on point and keeping it, not getting in, tell the details. There are some people that will want to know details, obviously, you know, those type of things. That's great, but the masses, me know more about the details and understand because we get educated all the time here. That's not where you will have the lectury that we have in understanding all that, does that make sense? But I think that has, I don't know, I like having that point in there somewhere because even if we weren't growing, we're still mandated to change.
Yes.
And that's the thing that I think people hear, well, just stop all growth. Well, we're still mandated to change, so.
And we're still mandated that we have to grow. We can't stop growth.
Right, and we're still mandated to do that too, so.
Let me make a couple. Just want to make a couple of points first, all right? For the record, we are not pushing any poop uphill and into the Sandy River.
No, we're not.
We need to be very, which actually tongue in cheek brings back the point of staying on point.
Right.
The messages and how we just communicated that can be easily misconstrued and people will run with it. And so it's very important that we be very precise about how we talk about this. I mean, it is fun, you know, to say things like that and I've said it myself, but we have to be better and more disciplined in order to, to make sure the actual facts are the ones that get shared.
I agree.
I was thinking that the message about staying simple is really important, but if they get into those details, we can always refer them to the city website. All the long stories that are in there, the details, they're so in-depth that many of us will just go crazy. Right, so when it gets to that kind of point, when people are concerned about how many gallons per hour, what the temperature raises are going to be, all that kind of stuff. I think referring them to the city website is really crucial because that's where the information is written down specifically and correctly.
Well, referring to the city websites, great. Also, I always still like to encourage them to come to a workshop or something that's happening. I don't know if we have any planned out, COVID's always kind of messed this up too, where, you know, COVID wasn't here, we'd be having, you know, easels up here and over in the library and some of these things, but a future meeting where they can come and learn that as well. And so maybe we have some, I don't know what the plan is for, you know, how far out, like go to a website, but we'll also have public meeting to kind of come ask those questions to the experts that are going to be there.
You, you know, we've done a number of outside the city meetings with quite a number of people.
Right.
In the open. And it might be, I don't know, this is for the public involvement people, maybe we should be doing some of that within the city. Get up in an opening situation where we can be ready to display that kind of stuff to the people that are inside the city as well.
All right, let's get off of the key messages page.
That's actually given me a very good segue into the next section, which is when we start talking about kind of these audiences and then the strategies because I think councilors made an excellent point of folks have a different level of desire for knowledge. So we use this pyramid to kind of divers, to stratify what those levels of interest are and then what our strategy and techniques are for reaching out to folks. So at the top of that, we've got Sandy City Council where we do periodic briefings. We send out a monthly, we, the wastewater advisory council, we now have a monthly project update that I believe was included in your packet for this work session. Just below that, the highly interested group, that is our regulators, some of the neighborhood associations of the site neighbors, groups that are going to be directly affected by the, the construction of the, of the different pieces of the project. And they get a lot more stakeholder interviews, briefings. This is what councillor Exner was talking about. We've gone out and talked to these groups, given them tours, targeted mailings, open house, public meetings, videos. We have folks that are the next level down that are interested and that is where we start getting into the, the websites, making sure that everything's available there for folks to get as into the weeds as they like. At a glance materials, FAQs, more information that they can access when they are interested, if they are interested. And then we have some folks who are still that are not yet interested, although that will change as rates continue to increase to pay for the project. We've been reaching out to those folks via the, the city newsletter, utility bill inserts, media coverage and, and customer surveys. But are these the, the strategies that you're looking to see? Is there something that is missing or something that you think is high, that needs to be highlighted and become more the focus?
Well, I would add that we're that highly interested group. When we're talking about, you know, organization briefings or public meetings or anything, I want to make sure that the folks talking to those folks are, are highly paid consultants and the staff. And I, I just think there's potential for them to, you know, and I'm the first one to say, you know, if you get me down there talking, yeah, I'll, you know, probably say the wrong thing or, or get the facts wrong or whatever. And I just want to make sure that the folks delivering the information are the consultants and the, and the city staff.
Let me, I, because I agree and I disagree.
Okay.
So I, I, I agree with facts and speaking to it from an intelligent standpoint. But I can tell you that there's a couple of, and I'm thinking like the Sandy Watership Council, for example, meetings where you can really develop a lot of trust through just general value type conversations of, you know, you know, guys, we got to do what's right for our community here and our rate payers. And we got to do what's right by the environment in the Sandy River and we've got to find a path forward and, and, and they, yes, right, Stan. And but you got to think outside, we call it outside of the pipe, right? Maybe you should be thinking on wetlands and I only go there sees a lot of these, a lot of conversations and trust gets built off of value type conversations between people at the council level who are elected leaders of our community and the stakeholder groups. And so that's when I say I agree and just I, I totally agree that when we're doing that kind of this is what's happening, consultants, all these staff, all those guys, but there is room there. And I think there needs to be for important discussions at more of a leadership level between like council and Watership Council members and stuff like that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I, I think there's, you know, I totally agree with that. I just think when we start talking alternatives to what we're proposing and things like that, that's when I think we get in front of our headlights and we need to let the consultants just, you know, frame that.
I will say that so far, I mean, I think we've had all the support we've asked for, for these, these events. And generally, and I, Carl's gone to more than I have, but the ones that I've been to, you know, we were introduced, but we didn't really have a speaking role. It was more of an informal role in shaking hands and talking to people, you know, after and before and, you know, that sort of thing. And, and I echo what the mayor said. I, I found one of those conversations to be very valuable. It was really off topic. It was just an anecdotal story, but we're during the wastewater plant and somebody's, one of the, the ladies was, what, what have you done to fix the chlorine leak that, that, you know, tainted the, the river? And we went over and I grabbed somebody and we went over and we looked and there's no monitor, there's no sensor in it. She goes, well, how's, how are you going to know it's not going to happen again? So we started a very two-minute conversation about, hey, could we add another sensor to our SCADA system to make sure that we detect that down the road? And the answer was, yeah, it's almost a no cost deal, but for her, very important. And so I think it's, it's important to have the ability to have those conversations and not be, not be hamstrung.
I'm here in relationships.
Yeah.
And that's what we want to do. We want to build that relationship. And then the other key piece is we want to be the ears and listen, their mouths and listen and then do what you did done. And it's like, here, let's, and that's, I think, what ninety-nine percent of these people want is they want to be heard, right?
I get the impression that some of the conversation is about me. I will try not to be sensitive about this, but just so you know, maybe some of you do. I spent years with some of these organizations long before this process was in place. Both Watershed Councils, many of the people in the Rosin Lake area, either very close friends or people who I've had associations with. And to me, that is a very strong connection that I've tried to use as a way to be, bring positive questions and constructive criticism rather than negative. Now, there's always the people out there who just don't seem to get it. They are saying that there's poop going into Sandy River as we speak even. Those are kind of people that I hope we can reach out as a group, as a council, but I, I don't, unless I get a lot of feedback, I don't intend to stop meeting with these people as I, I can, try to get the messages out and continue to make that happen, so.
I think it's.
I hear differently.
Whether it's you, me or anybody else, the important thing is that we're on message. We're fact-based, we have the consultants and the experts behind us.
Well, and I, I do want to kind of encourage us to do that, you know, listening and all that and that, you know. But I'm also mindful of the consultants kind of are giving us some advice on how to give those messages, when to give them, that, that, that one thing about, you know, responsive when appropriate, appropriate and things like that. And I do want to, you know, we're paying them a lot of money for this advice and I do want to listen to what they say and, and have a conversation and not have it just be coming from one counselor where, you know, it's, I've been involved with those organizations too. I know, you know, quite a few of the people, not as many as you, but, but it's, it's important that we're all kind of working as a council and not as individuals with, you know, with that.
Keep in mind, Carl and I meet with these guys regularly. And these slides you're saying, we've already been through them a couple of times now, so I mean.
Oh, yeah, but in, in some of it is, is our expertise and passions as individual counselors, you know, and, and, and that's honestly how things come from this meeting. A lot of times it actually moves forward and gets done and successful. And I think of like Sandy net over here, I think of, you know, the activities going on, the pool aquatic center and everything over here. And, you know, and homelessness over here and parks over here and, and it, like, I, I keep.
You just didn't say it. You think about the sewer job.
But I, but I, I mean, I, and I, and I think a lot of success comes from that. I, I really do. And so I, I do hear some, maybe some concerns, you, you know, trying to kind of read the tea leaves that maybe we're, you know, when we're at meetings and stuff, maybe we do occasionally step a little bit further out of where we should be and stuff. Maybe we need to be reminded of that to be just a little bit more careful and stuff of that. But, but I, I, I think that there's been from our interactions with the CPOs and the Watership Councils and my interactions with the DEQ and everything else, Carl's. Carl's been a tremendous asset in those ways of bringing stakeholders to the table and stuff. I'd like to personally, I'd like to continue to see that happen, but with the reminder that I think well served all of us on this council, you know, to really rely heavily on staff and the experts in doing so.
And I think there's a distinction between when we, and and this will be part of the stuff coming out with parameters as we study the the temperature alternatives and things like that, there'll be more formal, you know, consultant and city led events where we have experts up there and feeling the tough questions and and going through the technical reports. And there's a difference between that and maybe a small like, you know, coffee meeting or something where you're meeting with constituents or or neighbors or people that are interested. And I think on a something that we also want to hear from you tonight too, is how can we better equip you to have those talking points or have the key messages? And the 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 right level of facts to share so that you are on point and you're sharing factual information, you know, in those small meetings or talk about constituents and things like that. But I I agree, counselor, like, you know, we'll, we will have the right folks in place in in front of the the crowds when we have those town hall events. And the meetings I've gone to this point have all been very professionally well done tend to Don's point.
Absolutely. And so looking at those those strategies and some of the things that we've talked about, our next focus, we've seen that there might be a gap, and I think this is kind of what councillor Exner was getting at about being more proactive. Is that there's an opportunity online engagement to really go and do a better job. So thinking about updating the project website, making it easier to understand using more infographics and videos, separating out some of the information around what is affecting the Clackamas River Basin, what is affecting the Sandy River Basin. So it's easier to understand the pieces of the project. And then better leveraging some of the social media tools that the city has available. Jeff, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, thanks, Kim. So as everyone in this room is aware, a lot of our social media activity occurs on the Facebook platform. We have over nine thousand followers of the city's page. There are also a variety of community groups that are very active in the area, the largest of which Sandy Community Information has over thirteen thousand members. And the admin of that page tells me that according to her data, five thousand of which live in the immediate Sandy area. I'm not sure whether they're within the limits or not, but that's what I was told.
Are you gonna be gonna name the name of all the sites, Jeff?
No. The city also has an active next door account. There are two thousand three hundred and seventy eight members within the Sandy area there, and that that's an interesting tool because it allows us to target even specific neighborhoods. It's not, I think there are four or five or six, you know, kind of subgroups within the Sandy next door area. We also have our our online newsletter, as you know, which we have been using consistently to push out information to, you know, our Sandy residents in terms of what's going on. That's up to over twenty six hundred subscribers now, so that's going well. Those are really our main social media tools, Kim. Did you want me to go into further detail?
Hold on, I have one. It's not a social media tool, but it's one that we should totally activate more, which is the ads at the movie theater. They're like one hundred and fifty dollars, you guys. And I'm so anyways, I did it back in the day, swayed to do it. Anyway, so that was actually.
Sandy Net has never really advertised, but when Scott Lassly started all of that, he put a little ad in the paper just to help support the paper, and then he put one at the theater. It's funny because everyone's impression was wanting service. So anyway, but you know, the movies that not, they're they're coming back. And so it's actually a great, I think, a great tool that you have a.
It's easier to sell standing out than a sewer system. I'll just tell you that.
The way you're sitting there, you know, fun facts, you know, whatever.
What about the SAM app? Are there marketing opportunities on the sand? And not, I don't even know how many people are actively using that.
The freemium version.
So I I do think this is an opportunity for us individually, those who want to engage in social media. This is an opportunity to repost, comment and expand on material that's generated factual and already vetted. And so that's that's one of the things I'm looking forward to.
You're looking right at me because I don't repost you.
No, I just look at you because you're. But I know Kepley posts and I'll repost things and and I don't know what else, but it it's more of a, if you're comfortable, let's give you the materials to to engage people.
Yeah, I love the materials too. You're sitting at the soccer game, chatting with someone, they ask you a question or someone, you know. You're like, well, here, let me just give you, text you the PDF or the website or here. So they have all the facts there. You'll find it interesting like I do. And, you know, I think that is where I send most people.
I think it's really interesting too, and I I don't know if this is going to be covered in the presentation, but I want to make sure I get it out. I mean, this is a highly contentious thing. There are people that will never agree to whatever decision is made. And and so sometimes from a change management perspective, you can want to convert everybody, get everybody over to your way of thinking. That's not going to happen here. So we want to be, we want to be proactive in terms of providing positive, truthful, accurate information. But you also want to avoid irritating those who just aren't ever going to like it. So you have to kind of use some discretion on just using where every misinformation that gets posted on social media may not be advantageous to combat it, try to prove right. So we just learn that, yeah, yeah. Just let it go, you know.
On the news where they try to, you know, how the algorithms work, some of those agitations.
Right, so.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. So that's kind of why I just flipped the slide over to how council can engage. You're talking about sharing the social media posts from the city account about the project. On the right is a great example about the smoke testing that was recently being done for the project that could have been, that could be shared across media channels. There's no need to create your your own content. We'll be pushing more out on the various social media channels. So just the request is that if you see it and you would like to share, please do. We also, we now have the monthly council fact sheet on the progress of the project and that will continue to publish every month. And then we like, as you were talking about earlier, speaking with community, using the key messages. But the real question for from us for you is what other resources do you need in order to stay kind of on message? How can we help you be able to talk to constituents, talk to neighbors, talk to folks who are maybe not a fan of the project better?
I'm going to call it questions and answers, but sometimes it's accusations and reality. You know, it's it's some sort of document that we can reference of, you know, typically said points that need to be clarified or questions that need to be answered. Because I think a lot of the times, you know, we we may come across something that's said on social media or out in the public. And, you know, we we all have full time lives and jobs and everything else. And so if there was something that we could easily kind of reference back to when answering those kinds of things, I think would be really helpful.
Absolutely. That's a great idea. Definitely put that together.
I think that's that's kind of what I'd like to see us have to be, you know, when I see something on Facebook where, you know, it's saying that, you know, the rates have exploded or whatever, you know. You know, those key messages to our rate payers and our existing residents about, you know, again, how did we get here and the fact that the rates, you know, are higher than they have been, but they're not higher than, you know, most of the other places around around us. So just those kind of frequently asked questions or like you said, frequently, frequently accused. Accusations or whatever that we see on Facebook. Those are the kind of things that I'd like to see us be able to kind of just post when I, you know, that helps. Because then eventually the those folks get the message and they understand it. And again, they may not like it, they, you know, and all that, but at least they understand the the why of it, how we got here.
Yeah, yeah, talking about the why, things about the the project, about how it's class A water that's going to be going into the Sandy River, those types of things.
And the fact that we've worked so hard to get money to pay to offset the costs on our rate payers.
Yes, and a big win in, what was it, fourteen million?
Fourteen point seven million for that.
You know, I think that's a big number that should be shared.
Yeah, definitely. The the financing strategy has just been absolutely incredible compared to other communities.
Thank you for our current rate payers and residents would be really helpful. Awesome.
Yeah, definitely. We could put together that that for you guys, not fundamental. Anything else that we can prepare that would help?
I was going to say that I think one of the earlier points was the the difference between the communication strategy between the rate payers and then maybe the folks that are, you know, out outside of town but affected by this project. They're not the the message about the city keeping this as cost effective.
They don't care.
They don't care about that, right? So it's a different kind of strategy or talking points or key messages for that group versus what we're doing to make this, you know, modernizing our infrastructure, protecting the environment and keeping your rates as low as possible are messages for in town. Two of those things are true for, you know, outside of, you know, town.
So the biggest thing I think we have to answer is is, you know, your stewardship of the Clackamas River Basin was not all that fantastic. How do you expect us to trust you to be good stewards of the Sandy? I mean, that that's the question that we have to most adequately.
Yeah, and we'll work on some points in that, but it is a a really difficult question right now, especially as the work on the existing treatment plan hasn't been completed yet. But that is definitely our next next topic to tackle.
Another aspect of this that I want to just touch on is that I understand, you know, the folks down around the potential outfall area are obviously concerned. I guess one of the concerns I have is that I think that the folks, the areas of potential impact within the city, those folks that live around that have no idea. And I don't want them to be totally shocked by that. So I, again, being like you said, being proactive. I want to make sure that we're reaching out to those neighborhoods that that may have some potential impact from the different facilities that are, you know, within the.
Yeah, yeah. Because what's going to happen is to your point is it's going to come in and it's not going to have any scent or fumes or any of these things. It's going to be very well done. That's not what those neighbors are going to hear is going in next door, you know. And so getting in front of that and communicating what's happening and stuff is an excellent point.
Yeah, we need to kind of get on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. Any other comments around kind of what you're sharing from the community areas that are gaps to address? Before I turn it over to Rob to give a update on the the project status right now.
Well, two, so what is this? Don't, I don't want to forget to mention is we do have our our billing system through the mail that we can market in as well. Something to be thinking of. And then the biggest thing I see that's the most frustrating is that it's non-treated sewage going into the river. I mean, that is to me like the biggest misomer that's out there because there's a whole flyer made and, you know, that gets posted around and everything. That's like, that's the biggest problem we have.
I think we could fix that by having the mayor drinking a glass of.
Get get to a process where it's like grade A water and I'll do it, yeah.
Tell me, yeah. All right, you heard him. Let's do it.
One thing I've seen, and I don't know just how rough it is, but there have been some pushback to me about how we communicate. And I I was waiting for that to kind of come up, but when it's addressed to one of us, that's easy to to respond to. When it's in the mix of a media storm and I watched Dawn try to field a few of those and like just shake my head and think, thank you for taking that storm on.
You just log briefly logged out real quick.
I do not insert my name into that bunch of that Don do with that or whoever else is in that mix. But there have been a couple of places and a specific example I can think of at the moment is when I open up my Sandy City emails, I'll see some of these comments that are being made. Some of them are about the watershed and some are about other things too, but taking only on to the watershed statements is, I don't see a at least from my viewpoint, how that was responded to. Is it something that the mayor is taking all those on? Is it something Jeff or or Jordan is taking on? And some of these things come back to, I've seen them come back around to me. Nobody responded. How come Mr. Exner, Councilman Exner, what are you? What's your point on this point? Why, why didn't you respond? You know, nothing else I'd like to see, maybe Jordan or whoever is that responsible person that does respond to these that come through the mail have responded on a certain date, even whether you tell me what you said or not, I don't know if I care. But sometimes these people really do need an answer of some kind. I guess that's the question I have is individually, sure. On the media, sure, but if it's one of these comes to us through the the email source, I'd like to see that make sure we respond to. You've done such a good job with a council meeting, but public input, how we respond back, let's make sure we follow through.
I'd like to just build off what he said. I I think I think we should for the wastewater specific comments that come in. I think, Jeff, you get them, I guess, right? I think we should target one of us or or Kim. I don't care what works contractually, but so that we have somebody responds within, you know, what 24 hour business state kind of period.
I think it should be a link. Well, if we're going to put rules around it, then I think it has to be a staff member. Everything going on and everybody's world orbit up here.
Yeah, right. And if it's complicated, I mean, I'm happy to weigh in. It'll probably be a little longer. But but I I think that would help because otherwise I do see those and I wonder, I assume someone's going to answer or not or and sometimes I make a note I should and I forget.
So there's two questions coming into city council versus the wastewater.
Yeah, it's it's the stuff that hits our emails and I think it comes from you basically.
Well, okay, so there's the general contact us, send a message to the city council thing where all of you will get that message. Versus where I think Councilor Huckinson is speaking about is our specific wastewater project comments forum.
So let me clarify, it's actually both. So if we get through the general comments, a a question or concern or something about wastewater, I think it needs to get treated the same.
Right, okay, okay. It could be about anything. It could be about dogs. Somebody needs to respond somehow. But we're in here in the middle about wastewater treatment plant because it's a huge thing in our face, but people are focused on what they're focused on. If it's dogs barking next door and, yeah, I think at one time here several years ago, we had somebody dog chewed up on somebody else's dog and they were pretty mad about it for several meetings. Something like that should be responded to as well.
I I so I I differ in that I think, I mean, that those should be responded to, but I think from an urgency perspective, because of our wastewater project, because of the public concern and and the challenges there with change management. I think that needs a very specific kind of response, you know, if it's a real question, wants information, that information needs to be provided quickly. If it's a general complaint, you know, even a a simple thank you for your comment, here's our site for more information, but they need that response. And and if you're doing it, I would ask that you see me and call so that we can at least keep track.
That was my question. The full council wanted to be copied on in all these communications because we do get them. In fact, we're, we've learned some lessons. So we have this web form and we've had actually a few that fell through the cracks because when you have five staff and council copied, it's, you know, we need to be better coordinated, who's actually providing these responses and.
And it sometimes you encourage more way too much dialogue when they see who's all on the.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
And I've got the attention of all the people. Brian CC or whatever.
And it just gets out of control. I'm not saying, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we have a solution for that. We we have it responded to by by staff and de facto consultants to respond to these because they are, a lot of them are technical, right? So I and and people don't know, like often people don't know, like it's the form of government that city councillors or volunteers. They may not know every technical aspect of a project that, so they addressed you, but you guys obviously want us to respond. There are some though, and this comes in like to Carl's example that, you know, are more policy, you know, how can you vote for this sort of thing, you know, and that's not appropriate for staff to respond to. So in those cases, maybe we defer to Carl or Don as the oversight committee. If you want to respond, we have some, you know, standard responses that we can do too that are just, you know, kind of almost auto populated. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, yeah, that that we acknowledge that they they spent the time to send an email and we acknowledge back.
To me, it's really important that we do respond and also just as much as it is that we don't over respond.
Or speak for the rest of the council.
Yeah, so from what I'm hearing, I I think it sounds very appropriate for staff to respond to the technical questions and and to give a more can thank you for your response, you know, that and that and that for the more policy ones. And that on us, if we're on there, we're seeing those, well, that's. Well, that's on us as as elected officials to to reply to those policy questions.
Well, I think we need to be careful too when we reply that. We don't reply all because that's an open public.
That's right.
Comments, but then also what we've done in the past, you know, that's where we can bring those forward and discuss them here as the councillors because, you know, versus having one or two just speaking for the whole council that may get off a little bit on their, the rest of us may not agree or maybe misunderstandings or or not the same communication and not speaking the same message of what we just talked about here. But now they're coming over and emailing me and wanting me to respond. And now I'm a little bit different than Carl in my response and and so I would just would be very careful about someone coming in, the whole council, and then having one councillor speak on that.
Well, just I think, well, but I think it comes down to making sure we're clear. We're speaking on behalf of ourselves, right? Like if you individually apply versus replying as a council body in general.
That's for sure.
So anyway.
My ask is not so much that I can respond, but so that we, Carl and I are seeing all the communication that's going on so that we can inform the communication plan. And our role is oversight.
Like that's right.
So even if they're easily answered, just knowing what type, what kind of people, what kind of questions will will help us in our role.
Yeah, as the committee, I think you should know.
I think we're good. And as always the case, if you get individual emails or staff that are not copied because some that happens too. People just copy things, all the email addresses. Of course, for those jobs. But I know that to do that, that happens.
I'm gonna mention one last thing. I can't remember. Kim, Kim, on the you, somebody, maybe you mentioned the utility bills. I don't know about you, but I pay my bills online and so I get this email. And but I used to do it the paper wise and you had the little city messages and stuff on the backs of it. Most people are doing it online. And when I do that, I never see those city messages. I don't believe. I was trying to look at my email, but so that's, you know, so putting that in the body of of the message that I get when I get my utility bill, I think there might be some PDF attached to it or something that I have to open up, but I never do because I just want to know how much I owe and I'm, yeah. But putting it right there front and center to next to how much I owe is probably a more effective way to get me to read something that you want me to read.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I can, I'll talk to Jeff and we'll see kind of what the the online system allows for and try to see if we can get the information that you would otherwise receive in your bill attached to an online copy.
Thanks.
All right.
All right. And that was the the last slide that that was for me. Thank you very much for your inputs. I look forward to to working with you and getting back that that FAQ so you're better prepared going forward. But I'm gonna turn it over to Rob. He's gonna talk a little bit about exactly what's going on right now. So you're prepared today.
All right, I'm gonna go pretty high level because I want to respect everyone's time. I know we only have a few minutes left. Kind of put this, what's happening now into the different categories of work. So I'm sure this is very familiar to everyone here, but collection system work has been going on. Largely, we will be done with all the sewer main lines and basins two and eight by the end of this month. So on target there with just some manhole and private lateral work to continue on, but will be done by the end of the year. We should see results about how effective this work was through the winter and then have a much more complete idea of that next spring, which would be the time that we would be moving forward with the designs of basin six and seven and the next INI rehab project to be potentially constructed next summer into the fall. So that's where we're at with the collection system. Things are going fairly well. It's always hard working within in neighborhoods, but I think the contractor that the city has has been a good one for the city. I'm gonna keep cranking forward, jumping if there's any questions or comments. Existing treatment plant, we're underway with the first two phases of work that's in construction right now. The design of the third phase of work is ongoing. Plan to advertise that third phase in January. That's where contractors will be coming off of holidays, but also still be hungry enough to hopefully give us the sharpest possible bids on that work. We anticipate construction being complete in late summer 2022, at which point we plan to re-rate the treatment plants. Give us an idea of what the new capacity of the existing Tickle Creek Treatment Plant is. And that will also help guide decisions about the future phases. So that's going well. A little slower. Construction prices continue to astound us, but we're making the the progress that we need to make on the existing treatment plant. And then we are in a permitting phase right now. Jordan had mentioned parametrics. They're the consultant that's leading this effort. We are looking at all the possible ways to mitigate temperature so that what we discharge to the Sandy River fits within the regulatory parameters there. We are, we have asked them to start looking at a short term study to evaluate the feasibility of discharging the treated water directly to groundwater and that will actually be infiltrating through the ground into groundwater. Oregon doesn't allow a direct discharge right to the aquifers. But they're looking at the feasibility of doing that and in particular within city limits with our goal of getting a draft DQ permit put together and submitted by around this time next year. And then Kim already mentioned with the application, looking to get that submitted next month. So it's kind of where we're at. Lots going on. But we're continuing to not only focus on the here and now, but also what we need to do to keep the program moving forward to future phases. So any questions?
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very helpful. All right, that's the end of our work session here. Well, I have an announcement to make before we end our work session. I was gonna wait till council reports, but we've just spent so much time talking about wastewater. So Senator Merkley's office called today and we just got passed through appropriations, so we're not to the very end, but with one party control, the Senate, the House and the presidency, it looks really good. It should be really good. I got a million dollars to go towards our wastewater treatment facility through appropriations. So I'm very excited. Great news for that. Actually, this next this. With that, let's adjourn until 7:05. I'll call this work session and close. Thank you so much, Kim and Rob, for your presentations today.
Whoops, I didn't know my mic was hot there.
It was. I've been listening to somebody hit the enter button over and over again.
Oh, that's me. Sorry about that.
No, it's totally fine. I'm like, I care.
I burped very unprofessionally and then noticed my mic was hot, so.
That I actually didn't hear. There you go.
And call the Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God. In the diesel with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Per our normal deal, I'll do a quick review of tonight's agenda. And I will call for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go into public comment. We do have one form submitted from the executive director of the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce, Chris Jones. After the public comment portion, we'll go to the consent agenda, which has our Sandy City Council meeting minutes from our October 4th meeting. Thank you, councillor. Under ordinances, we'll have a public hearing on 16370 Royal Lane Annexation. Under Old Business, we have the Special Service Contract Program Grant Awards. And nothing under New Business tonight from a report with the city manager. We'll have a discussion or selection panel for the interviews for the Planning Commission applicants. And then under, we'll then go to committee council reports, but during that we'll also have a discussion on a note that we received from the Planning Commission Chair Ospey on Planning Commission Term Limits. With that, let's go ahead and get started. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Pete's here. Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Polium.
Here. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? See, now we'll move ahead to public comment. Please note, this is the opportunity to provide testimony. Oh, there will be time to provide testimony on the Royal Lane Annexation later in the agenda. Now, council welcomes all comments on matters at this time. As I mentioned, we had nobody that submitted that participate virtually, but we do have someone in the room here, Chris Jones. Please approach the podium. You have five minutes. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. Chris Jones, the Sandy Chamber of Commerce. 38954 Proctor Boulevard Suite, well, not suite, it's 146. It's our PO box, so.
I call it virtual. You know, it's just a really small suite.
Right, yeah, little, yeah, my little windowless office. So no, I just wanted to let you know that we were moving forward with Trick or Treat Trail this year after debate and trying to figure out what to do. We're a little slow getting it out, but we wanted to make sure it was going to happen before we put that out there. So we will be doing the traditional way going through the downtown core area again. It'll be on Saturday, the 30th from 1 to 4. And we have opted not to do the photo option places and doing the photo contest to try to keep from backlog and people, you know, kind of milling around places with COVID. So, you know, encouraging people to include a mask with your costume and social distance with that, but looking forward to it. We currently have about 40 businesses signed up. We've only had one business for personal reasons, wasn't who normally participates, who hasn't. So we've had a really good feedback from businesses and the participation registration for businesses is open until the 22nd, till Friday. And we will have maps out at various locations on the 26th. So.
And what day was that again?
October 30th, Saturday from 1 to 4.
All right. And I'd just like to say, you know, this is not an easy time to do events and it takes a lot of leadership to step forward and put these on under these kinds of circumstances and and it's really cool that we're gonna do a very traditional event that we've done with common sense things, practices in place. And I just, I just want to say, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Glad to hear that. We're we're excited to be able to do it and bring it back to not only the businesses, but the the kids in the area as well.
I know the Kiwanis, we're also interested in helping or having a station or something like that. Right. Have they reached out to you?
I have not heard from them yet. But I'm, we will be making phone calls towards this end of this week, calling anybody who traditionally does participate that we haven't heard from since it is so last minute getting it out. So we do have somebody who'll be doing that later this week and checking in. So I'll make sure that they.
It was a topic at their meeting and so they, but they were still kind of a little bit in the dark of what was happening. So probably getting a hold of them sooner to so they can.
Right.
Get the candy and all that.
Right. Sounds good. Thanks.
I have to say this. I'd say our business down on the main street, I'm not gonna plug it for the moment, but I'm hoping for a thousand kids this time. We've been up in the 800 and 900s. Imagine that. Thousand kids come through. I know the library gets that kind.
Yeah, they get like 2,000 a year.
It's crazy. That's really a popular spot.
It it is, and it's trying to tell businesses this year how many kids to plan for and how much to buy has been difficult because I don't know if the numbers will be up, if they'll be down. So it it's been a, trying to figure that out.
Experienced numbers have been up. I'm talking conferences, conventions, gatherings. People are ready to get out.
I think so. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a successful year and we're just hoping for no rain.
Yes.
At least during those those three hours.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move forward with our consent agenda of our city council meeting minutes from October 4th. Unless there's discussion, is there a motion?
I move that we accept the city council minutes.
Their second.
Also.
Motion from Councilor Exner and a second from Councilor Sheldon that we adopt our consent. Motion from Councillor Exner, and a second from Councillor Sheldon, that we adopt our consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Marked it down as an aye, Smallwood.
Yeah, didn't you hear me? Can't you hear me?
Saw your lips move a little bit, we got. All right, under ordinances, we have our annexation of 16370 Royal Lane. With that, I will call this public hearing to order for state land use file number 21-041 ANN. At 7:13 on October 18th, is there any abstentions from the hearing body? Seeing none, is there any conflicts of interest? All right, I'm going to poll the here, the hearing body for ex parte contact, just reminder that includes any site visits. All right, I am now calling on any challenges to members of the hearing body. To bring a challenge, if you are joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized, if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized.
And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, seeing none, and we'll move forward, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it at a later appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval, according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing. Or by the close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government. Or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval. With enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue. Precludes an action for damages in circuit court. All right, we're ready for the staff report, Kelly.
I see that there's somebody with their hand raised, I don't know if you want to address that now, or wait until I'm done, I don't know if it's a challenge.
Looks like the hand was just lowered.
So, there's another hand raised.
And now that one's lowered as well, so I'll just assume that those were.
All right, and we are past the, the portion, so let's just move forward, we're good.
Good, sounds good. Good evening, let me start my slideshow here. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah, we can now.
I don't know why it's not beginning, hold on.
A short delay for some reason tonight.
And can you see my cursor as well, because I'm going to try to use that during the hearing, okay, perfect. So, as the mayor said, this is for 16370 Royal Lane. The application is being brought forth by the City of Sandy and HHPR, the consultant that's helping the Public Works Department with. Road right away acquisition and development of Bell Street and 362nd. And during the pre-app for. That road, those two road extensions, it came up that it would be really helpful to have this property annexed into the City of Sandy. So that we're not going through Clackamas County for any part of the review, and so we can do everything in-house. And it also made a lot of sense for once Bell Street and 362nd are in, that this property is then available to be developed at that time. So I'll just kind of go through the slideshow here. So if you look here, where my cursor is, this is where Bell Street currently terminates right by the high school. This is the Mount Hood Athletic Club, this is where Buy Mart, Dollar Tree. And Grocery Outlet are located, down here is Highway 26, and right now, there's this little road called Royal Lane that kind of follows up here. And accesses, I think, five or six houses. One of them being the house located right here, that's on this 15 acre piece of property. And as you can see, the, this property is mainly forested on the east side, which I'll go into a little bit more here in a minute. And on the west side, it is more like open or farmland. And as you'll see, all this pink area around the property is currently in city limits. So this property that is the subject property for annexation tonight. Along with three other smaller properties down here are what's known as an island by Oregon State statute, and that just means it's surrounded by at least 80%. By city limits, and in this case, it's completely surrounded. So if this annexation is approved tonight, then these other three little smaller properties will then still remain an island, but basically the island just gets smaller. And the conceptual zoning designation for this property is C2 general commercial. So it's ready, it's this property again, it's the red property. And you can see where Bell Street is here, so Bell Street will continue along the north edge of this property. You'll also notice, which I'll go into more detail here in a few slides, is Kate Schmitz. Currently stops about right here by the Goodwill. And we have right away, or we've acquired right away from the school district and from. The owners of the Mount Hood Athletic Club all the way up to this point. Currently, there's nothing beyond that point that would connect it to Bell Street for right away accusation, but as you can see. The alignment is problematic as it's lined up right with a creek and a wetland. So we'll talk about that more in a second here. So the, the annexation request is for general commercial zoning to be applied once it's annexed into the City of Sandy, consistent with our conceptual plan here. And that's basically this slide says, it's a type four annexation, we did all the proper notifications to the state of Oregon. To the surrounding property owners within a thousand feet. We put a legal in the paper, and as I said, they're just, the City of Sandy and the property owner are just requesting a conceptual zoning designation of C2. So it's a type A annexation. So there's a few things for conditions of annexation, which this meets all of them. One of them is that it's within the urban growth boundary, another one that's the site must be contiguous to city limits, which it is on the. North, east, and portions of the south and west side. It must meet procedural statutes in RS Chapter 222, which have been met. And the property owner cannot violate true retention requirements, which from the best we can tell, the property owner has not. For an island annexation such as the proposal before you tonight. TPR analysis is not required. We just want to make sure that it meets a logical growth pattern with city limits touching all four sides of the property or a portion of all four sides of the property. And for this property being annexed to assist with development and expansion of Bell Street and 362nd. I honestly couldn't think of a property that meets more of a logical growth pattern in our city limits. And as the last bullet point says, the city is requesting. The annexation along with the property owners. So one little complexity to this, which you might have seen on the zoning map a few slides before. And as I pointed out, is that there's wetlands and a creek on the east side of the property. The code currently says that prior to annexation, you either survey. The FSH to make sure that the FSH boundaries and the restricted development areas, which are the setbacks around. Natural resources such as creeks and wetlands have been properly mapped. The alternative is you can just. Annex the property with the existing FSH overlay. And then before development, you can then survey the FSH and the restricted development lines to make sure it is correct. And the reason for this is because the FSH boundary and the restricted development areas are kind of a crude level. They, they've been, they've been determined through a crude level, there's never been a survey on each individual property throughout the City of Sandy. So we don't know if, where that wetland is shown or where that creek is shown is actually correct. The other thing is when that wetland and creek were identified in a past wetlands inventory. That was over a decade ago, and as we know, wetlands and creeks. They change over time, so I, we, I don't think we should be making any assumptions on where the wetland or creek exactly are. And so I have kind of written a condition in there to be somewhat vague to give flexibility for both the City of Sandy and the property owner. To kind of work together and negotiate to determine who does the survey work. But the survey work would be needed for the crossing, let me see here. So the survey work as shown on the zoning map would be needed. At a very minimum in the near future for this area right around here to determine. Bell Street and how it's going to cross the creek and wetland and, and how that street crossing will be mitigated. In the future, it will also be necessary to survey the rest of this area to make sure that no development that occurs on this site, the subject site. Or the extension of Kate Schmitz does not impact the creek. Or wetland, and furthermore, to confirm that where the improvements are placed, meet the. Meet the development code setback requirements to creeks and wetlands. So the, once the FSH and restricted development area are remapped. It very well meet, might be that the creek and wetland has shrunk in size. Or is more to the east now on the school district property, and therefore would have less impact to this property. However, on the flip side, it might show that it's actually migrated to the west, and so that's. That's the reason why when we updated the annexation code about a year and a half ago, we added this requirement. And then I just want to point out, in the TSP currently from 2011. The roadway plan shows, and these are all conceptual alignments. But the roadway plan shows Bell Street along the north edge of this property, and it shows Kate Schmitz, and as you'll notice, it kind of bends around. Right here, and that's, I believe, because it was trying to accommodate the creek. The only problem, and I don't want to solve this tonight, but I just want to let everybody be aware of it, is that, whoops. Right now, we don't own right away at this point right here, so in the future, I don't know, if this road continues and is actually constructed. We might have to acquire additional property from the Mount Hood Athletic Club. Or come up with some alternative way to put this road up while mitigating the natural features, so. It's kind of a little bit perplexing to me. And with that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this annexation. With the conditions outlined in the staff report, including the FSH mapping conditions. So, and that concludes my report, so I'm going to stop sharing for now. And if you have any questions, you can ask them of me now, or we can wait till after we go through the entire process before you tonight.
Any questions before we move along?
I had one. Let me find it, sorry. On, on your finding number 17, and then your reference to the TPR, is that what you rest for? Can you kind of clarify what it, it says, TSP finding requirements, what does that finding mean?
Yeah, no, that, yeah, it's very confusing, so it's transportation planning rule, it's a thing that we basically look at to determine how. Future trips in a reasonable worst case scenario can impact the street system and mainly the highway. However, this property was already in the UGB when the last TSP was completed, so. ODOT and our attorneys have taken that, TPR analysis was done basically in, by 2011 because it was included in the UGB. Any properties that were brought into the UGB in 2017, which as you all know, there's a lot of properties, almost 600 acres that were brought in then. Those properties prior to annexation have to do TPR analysis. Our code also says if it's an island within the existing UGB, it doesn't have to do TPR, so it kind of double qualifies. It's basically just additional transportation analysis that the city and HHPR would have had to have done prior to this annexation. But because this property was in the UGB prior to 2011, and because it's an island, that TPR analysis is waived.
Thank you, the second question I had had to do with, what's the likelihood or the possibility that they would then. Request zone change later, after they were annexed in? Was that part of this analysis?
So that's, that's a good question too. I don't really have a good answer for that, because at any time, any property owner could request a zone change. However, as you, I think, all know as well, because we just dealt with this recently with a few zone changes in the last few years. Is that they can't bring any of the existing zoning classifications into a deficit. And right now, we don't have a big surplus of general commercial land. So I don't think they would pass the muster to be able to even do the zone change. Because if, like, let's say they tried to change it to residential lands, they would be putting. Our commercial lands in a deficit for buildable lands, and therefore violating state statute, so we would deny it based on that basis. Does that, does that answer your question?
Exactly what I was curious about.
Okay.
Cool.
Now, can I just say one other thing, I just want to qualify that with, if the FSH analysis. Through the survey does determine that that mapping needs to be changed, that would trigger a zone change, but, but only for the FSH overlay portion, not, not the underlying zoning.
All right, with that, we are to the applicant presentation where you'll be provided 10 minutes, I'm assuming that's you, Mr. Kilby. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, if you could just give me a second, I'm trying to share my screen here. We tried this last time, it didn't work so well, so we'll give it a shot. Are you seeing my screen?
Yep.
We are.
Great, thank you. So I won't, I'll just go through this quickly because I think Kelly covered this really well. So the city is in the process of exploring or designing an extension of Bell Street and 362nd for. Eminent construction within the next couple of years, and as part of that, we're proposing to annex a portion of the property. That is currently an island. Okay, so the City of Public Works is, and the property owner are acting concurrently as the applicant for this. Project, the property owner has signed the application, it supports the annexation. And the 367th Drive extension would go along the north edge of this property, and it's surrounded on three other sides, actually four other sides, with existing city limits. Here's the proposed site, subject site is grayed out, and then everything around it is. Already in the city, so this is the next one, it shows the existing city elements, and it shows the entire rectangle as an island. And as Mr. O'Neill suggested, this would bring this portion of the site or 15 acres into the city limits. The property is currently zoned through a Clackamas County zoning designation. The city went through comprehensive plan, concept plan for the area, and has this site identified as C2 general commercial. We're not proposing to rezone the property, we're just simply, well, we would rezone it to the city's designation. Not proposing to rezone it beyond anything that's already been conceptually planned. And then upon approval of the annexation, it would be, pick up that C2 zoning. As Mr. O'Neill suggested, there is a perennial stream that runs along the eastern border of the site. With a flood and slope hazard overlay over a portion of that property. As part of the next steps that will be coming in to the city with would be the conditional use permit. Application for those impacts and to do the FSH overlay review. And we have surveyed portions of that stream and wetlands that are impacted by the new roadway. We did not go along the east edge of the property. Simply because at that time, it wasn't within our scope of work, and it wasn't something that we had anticipated having to do. Generally, we thought that it would be the properties, the property owner's requirement upon development to. Confirm their, the resource overlay boundaries. I think Mr. O'Neill went through the annexation approval criteria. I think that if you look through the record, you'll find that our application clearly demonstrates that the approval criteria have been met. The property will be served by adequate public facility and services, this is important to note, whenever you annex property into the city limits, they have to be provided with public water, sewer. Stormwater drainage is, I mean, we would tie into a public storm drain for putting the water into there, but it's typically treated. And conveyed on a private site into the public facility before it's actually let go, let loose. And then with future construction of 362nd to Bell Street, there'll be pet and bicycle facilities on that, on that street section. The site will get, continue to get served by Sandy Fire District. And although it's this little area, I'm not really sure, there might be an IGA in place. I didn't find anything, but it's, if it's currently served by the county, it'd be served by the city upon annexation. I think Mr. O'Neill talked about the TPR analysis. I think Mr. O'Neill talked about the TPR analysis. And we honestly believe that the annexation of that island is also in the best interest of the city. As it's already surrounded by the city and eventually that's where it should be. This is the flood hazard, flood and slope hazard overlay area. I guess, as I mentioned, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but. This is the area where we have already mapped and surveyed that resource. And it generally follows the same alignment that shows on here and to Kelly's point, this is. Generally ground truth at the time of development, but. When they're actually mapping and designating these areas, there's some indicators, you can look at topography and you can look at aerials. To see where the vegetation and the water is and where the draws and stream areas and things like that are. So you can clearly somewhat map it, it's just never ground truth because it'd be too expensive to go out and do that. For the, all the, all the areas within your city. Sometimes you'll see some. Government agencies will go out and spot check just to see, make sure that they're, they're. Accurate or somewhat accurate, but that hasn't happened here, so we did, like I say, survey. These areas and they'll be. Affirmed through our feature application for the conditional use permit. With that, I'm here to answer your questions. Mike is here to answer your questions from Public Works and Chris Beatty, the project engineers on the line. Should you have any questions for him and we respectfully request that you accept the planning commission's recommendation of approval and approve the request for annexation. Thank you for your time.
All right, well, thank you, sir, appreciate it. This will be the time for public testimony. Here are guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at CI.Sandy.or.us. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time to indicate. You wish to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require each person to state their name and address for the record. I am now calling on testimony in favor of the proposal. A reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record, you'll have up to three minutes and Jeff will give you a twenty second warning. So this is the appropriate time to be doing all the hand raises.
Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, I am now calling on testimony against the proposal. Another reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record, you'll have three minutes, Jeff will give you a twenty second warning.
Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, I'm now calling for neutral testimony. These are general comments neither for nor against the proposal. As a reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record, you'll still have up to three minutes and Jeff will give you that twenty second warning.
And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, staff recap and recommendation, Kelly, you're up.
Yeah, I'd say the recommendation stays. As was recommended in the slideshow, you know, one thing I do want to point out is that I know it's somewhat unusual to have. A vague condition like I wrote for the FSH mapping surveying requirements. But I think in this particular case, it makes a lot of sense and that is because the city of Sandy is in negotiations with its property owner and. HHPR and the Public Works Department are in a better place than I am to know how those negotiations will go down. And to know. When the proper surveying will be for the Bell Street crossing. And when the proper serving will be for Kate Schmitz or property development in the future, so. I think in this particular case, even though it's not common, I think having flexibility and having a condition written. Like I've written it is very important for the project moving forward and the property owner.
All right.
And that's my summary.
You, this is time for the applicant rebuttal. If you wish to give a rebuttal, you have five minutes and Jeff will give you a one minute warning.
No, 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 sir, we don't have any rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so council, this is your opportunity for any questions you may have for the applicant. Afterwards, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing. At that time, we can still talk and have questions with staff. But you won't be able to ask any additional questions of the applicant, so this is your last opportunity to do so. Any questions?
I said one, it's probably from my own education, but this particular property is owned by two family trust, it looks like. One of which is listed on the application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The, the other trust, we did receive signatures from both, from all property owners. So they are included in the packet, or if they're not, they're included in the physical packet in the office.
The letter, is that the way, I mean, normally wouldn't all the owners be listed on Exhibit A, but instead. We just have one trust on Exhibit A and then the letter has a second from the other trust, the reboot trust, I believe.
That's pretty common when, and I don't know if this is the case here. But when one of the property owners is out of state or might not live on the site, this is how we kind of receive it typically.
And then just related to the nature of trust, are we certain that the trustees listed. Are have the appropriate legal authority to represent the trust?
We, we don't get into that level typically. That's why we, that's why we noticed the public hearing, that's why we send notices to everybody. We don't, we don't do like a background legal search on the property owners, however, when they sign. The application, they're saying that they're signing it.
On behalf of the trust.
On behalf of the trust and that they're complying with the requirements of the, as being the property owner, so. Basically, if it was to come back later on that they signed it illegally, I think. We would have to, I don't know what the action would be, but that would be a problem.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing? All right, sir, a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Sure, a second.
I second it.
There's a motion by Counselor Pete Zold and a second by Counselor Walker to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries, public hearing is closed seven forty one PM. I'm calling for discussion by the hearing body. It's pretty straightforward.
I'm pretty excited. It's an island, island shrinking, but also just for transportation system plans and what we're trying to do with Bell Street three sixty second. We needed to have this happen anyways, and so I'm glad that there's willing partners and, and to get this formed, so.
Go ahead and call for the first reading, Jeff.
Okay, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty nine. An ordinance approving annexation of one property totaling approximately fifteen point two one acres. And assigning general commercial zoning in performance with the conceptual zoning.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
Make a motion that we, the first reading.
For a second. Motion by Counselor Pete Zold and a second by Counselor Exner to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion unanimously carries, can I get a second?
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty nine. Ordinance approving annexation of one property totaling approximately fifteen point two one acres. And assigning general commercial zoning in performance with the conceptual zoning map.
And motion to approve the second reading.
And moves that we approve the second reading.
Second. Most of my counsel are expert and a second by counsel Hockenson to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty one dash twenty nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close nay. Motion carries, all right, that's great, thank you to staff and everybody for your hard work, thank you Brad, I Killby and Kelly, really appreciate it. All right, let's move ahead under old business, we have our special service contract program grant awards. David Snyder with the update, we got a couple of counselors who are on the committee that probably want to give us a bit of the update as well, go ahead Dave.
Evening, Council, I'll keep this brief so to, but Council discusses more. Before you are the recommendations of special service contract program application review subcommittee that met here in council chambers on. The twenty ninth of September, many thanks to counselors Pete Zold, Walker and Exner for assisting us with that. With the withdrawal of the chamber secondary application to create a local jobs board, the funding request only ended up being five hundred fifty to five dollars more than available funding, making the financial adjustments. Much simpler than they otherwise would have been. The only thing I'd like to bring up from the subcommittee meeting is that as stated in the staff report, the subcommittee asked staff to determine if it's possible to replace. The money used for the chambers application with ARPA funding so that we may return some of that money to the general fund. It staff has determined that this is possible for the funding that's expended on requests for assistance from businesses inside city limits. So business location in relation to city limits will be one of the performance measure variables we will ask the chamber to track for us. Where it comes to determining performance measures, reporting and payment schedules, this program will remain pretty much the same. For the, for this final biennial grant period. Starting in two thousand twenty three, per council request, the grant period for this program will become annual. At that time, we'll return to council to see what change, other changes, if any, this body recommends at that time. And because I know you'll prob, you're probably wondering, staff is still working to determine available funding for the ARPA funded secondary version of special service contract program to be. Operated annually, we will ring that information before you when it's complete.
All right, anything special we have to do because of the ARPA funds?
Not yet, but.
But like, there's no special program we got to approve or any motions we got to do to make sure that we carve it out or anything like that?
None at this time.
Okay.
Cool. We'll bring that as a package.
Guys on the committee, folks on the committee, want to speak up or just move on for it, sounds pretty easy. Thank you guys for your work.
Yeah, it was pretty easy. I think a lot of our conversations, other than the fact that it was pretty easy to decide was. Having an annual. Option to do some of this is probably a pretty good idea rather than wait a couple of years. At least I favor that. The moment worked out really well, I thought.
All right, we have a motion to accept the, the grants award program.
Make the motion that we accept the grants award that was presented in the packet.
Sure, a second.
I'll second.
That was perfect, I'll give it to. That was a good one though. All right, we'll go, a motion from Counselor Pete Zold, a second from Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries, all right, thanks David, appreciate it. Thank you again, everyone who served on the committee. All right, report from our city manager, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to announce the hiring of Rochelle and her home Paul Harsh as our new Parks and Recreation Director. I want to thank. The counselors and also staff. Well, and department heads for all being involved in this process. I will introduce her at a future meeting as we get closer to her start date, which is November eighth. I could say that she is very excited to be joining the team, we're thrilled too, she brings a lot of experience. Working for, most recently, the City of Oregon City as their Recreation Aquatics Manager, so. We're very much looking forward to bringing her on board and, and of course introducing her to the council.
Right, Brad, looks like just an outstanding fit.
Yeah. And yeah, so that's a, we'll bring, we'll bring her back for an introduction, but November eighth is her start date. Before I get into the planning commission interview panel. Wanted another recruitment update on the Public Works Director. A good bit of news there is, it looks like we have several qualified candidates that are interested. We're working with SGR on that recruitment, which is a firm that's conducted a nationwide search. So that closes on Wednesday and we are looking to fill that pretty, pretty quickly, so. We'll, Angie will probably be reaching out about that process for having a couple of counselors involved. On, on panels for that hire as well. Speaking of public works related matters, you heard about or with you a timeline for submitting our application. We're still on target with that. Staff met with S and P for preliminary rating on our wastewater utility last week, which went pretty well. That's just on the preliminary, we have to do, I think, two formal ratings as part of this large loan as part of the process, so. We're actually getting pretty good at these rating calls these days. We talked about, well, so tonight's annexation was related to three sixty second and Bell Street. Obviously a huge priority for us, we, we are looking to schedule some time with city council. It's either a work session or an update on that project. We just received the sixty, sixty percent design and cost estimate, so we're working through that at the staff level. Looking for some value engineering opportunities, obviously, with. Construction costs, but some of the, the changes with the design on the stormwater retention and things like that, so. We're working through that, I think we'll have some options and opportunities there for council to continue to, to move forward with that. Offer letters to property owners have gone out to, I think, three or four properties, the appraisals are all in. And so we're working through that process, so far good news on that front, so. I think in, coming up in about a month or less, we'll probably have, try to schedule something with council to talk to that project where we're at. And then finally, I, I want to congratulate Tyler and our finance team. We received for the, I think, our third straight year certificate of excellence for our, for our financial reporting. And so from the GFOA, so it's always good a bit, good bit of news when we get those letters and plaques, so.
You say the thirtieth?
Yeah.
That was three zero, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a long time of.
It was on the budget that we recently received our second, yeah, that's right. And then finally, on the planning commission interview panel. We're looking for three courageous volunteers. To, interviews for filling or for the appointment for, I think it's four positions. Are coming up on the planning commission, I think those interviews would take place in November. Application period comes to a close, in this case, we also have the situation with the, the chair. And vice chair, right, for, so three commissioners and then the planning commission will select. A member from their ranks to serve on that panel as well, so. Yeah.
I'd like to serve on that committee. Well, I, that's fine, I get to choose, that's the one thing I get to do. So, so who else?
I've done it many times, Al, I, other people, okay?
I have an interest in that area. I wouldn't mind, you know.
Okay. So why don't we? All right, we're going Richard and Kathleen, I'll find, we did any mini my email. So I'll be myself, Richard and Kathleen on the.
All right, thank you.
When is that closed?
On the thirty first.
Thirty first, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any applicants already?
We have three so far.
Plus we have attorneys.
Two returnees, one new, but I expect one.
Yeah.
Is every, all the vacant or the ones up reapplying?
We don't know at this point, but we still have, I think, two weeks.
Sure, thanks.
I, I know we're, we have more planning commission business to talk about. Later, this is related, but I'll, I'll, I'll wait for that.
We can do it now, whatever someone wants.
Yeah, for what?
The.
Jerry's.
Jerry's.
Yeah, suck, but.
Want to talk about it now and just give.
Yeah, elections have consequences.
Yeah, they do.
And I, I like the fact that we do get to have turnover on appointments and stuff, quite honestly. I think that I've now been mayor for three years. And I have not had to this point an opportunity to have a say on the majority of planning commission members yet. I think, I think that elections should have consequences, I think, quite honestly, this last election had some consequences. And I think that that's kind of the voice of the people talking and we have the appointment process of the, of the paying commission and. And so I'd be, you know, if we think it's too much all at once with all of them coming up, it might be a little. and so I'd be, you know, if we think it's too much all at once with all them coming up, it might be a little up, but I I don't like the like, I actually don't like how the memo ended, to be just quite frank, how it was like, we need to be able to kind of slow this down to two, two and two. So we can keep these like majority kind of, you know, it was it was kind of talked about as experience and I think that's great. I mean, we do want experience, but those are the factors for council to decide when we're appointing those positions, quite frankly. Nothing stops an incumbent member from reapplying for the position and from a council selection committee and the council body for reappointing that person. But I do think that all of us as city counselors in this community should have an opportunity to continually do a a review process of the planning mission appointments.
Okay, go away in a little bit. I was interested in being part of that selection committee because I think there is a certain amount of logic for saying that we need some experienced people in there. I don't think we need to have all them experienced and go back, I don't know how long it's been. Sometimes things slide by so fast. I don't know which months we've decided that, but there was a time when we felt we needed to be able to have some kind of hand in being able to select committee members, in this case, planning commission members, to be able to weigh in on things like management of the meetings, some of the concerns we've had with personnel and that kind of thing. So I think there is a need to be able to look at that and be able to make those kinds of decisions. In the past, it's been not very well looked at. But I do like the idea of being able to look at how we have for experience and a diverse set of eyes in there. I guess that would be my recommendation. I'll put it that way as the three council members to look at those folks in terms of getting a good sense of diversity. So we've got different eyes, but also keeping some ability to do the experience and understand some of that because it is some very difficult decisions. There and they represent quite a bit of work in there. I remember those days when the piles used to be this deep and you had to analyze quite a bit of that just to make sure you were involved. So we need to have people who are committed. Don't want somebody there that just walks in the meeting hoping to be able to make decisions just because they happen to be in the seat. For that.
Yeah, luck.
Done. So I read this memo and I'm just going to preface it by saying it seemed really well thought out. Made a lot of sense to me. And so but I I'm very curious to see what Rich thinks on this before I cast my opinion one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, so my thoughts are the two, 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 one, I I struggle with that a little bit and it seems like if they're if we're trying to get past a learning curve two years. Doesn't seem to quite cover that a lot. Or two people, I'm sorry, but I I I agree with Stan. The elections have consequences and we turnover can be good. And turnover should be expected and I agree that we we can appoint the same people, but I'm highly supportive of the staggered. Changeover. I think that allows a little bit of both, right? It allows the 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 people that are here now to kind of set their piece and then as as things change, so will the planning commission evolve with that.
Right.
So I'm supportive of this. I think it's super important to, I think it's super important to have leave some continuity while also allowing the opportunity, not necessarily the requirement, but the opportunity for fresh thoughts.
You're supportive of.
Yeah, same thing.
Supporting the status quo with the four, three.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, the the changing of the rotation.
Changing the rotation to the two, 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 one.
I'll kind of weigh in because I remember when this first got proposed for the parks board. And I I kind of had the same reaction as far as trying to stagger things a little bit. I agree that we need turnover, but when you have half your board turnover, that's a lot of what do you call it? Corporate knowledge or whatever. It's not corporate, but you know, whatever. It's a lot of institutional knowledge because it does take a long time and and the planning commission is even more so than the parks board. But you know, understanding how it's very similar in that, you know, you understand how developments operate and how parks master plans come together. And so I guess, you know, I could go either way on it, but I I would like to see it be consistent amongst the other boards because I think the same situation comes into play of that institutional knowledge just getting, you know, cut in half every two years or whatever. So.
You guys, I'm feeling an assumption and I'm sorry, I'll I'll go real quick because I already talked, but I am feeling an assumption that like these people's terms come out, so they're like term limited, right? They just go on and that's that's not the case, right? I mean, it comes in front of council and like this whole like experience and and weighing that versus new. Well, those are all the factors that an elected council and and a committee would be weighing when choosing and recommending those counselors. I mean, I I'm I'm sure if they're if they in the future, if they think anyway, the way the way we do is they'll be sitting there going, oh, you know, man, we're sure adding a lot of new members, you know, maybe we need some institutional knowledge and those kinds of things. So just something I kind of wanted to throw up there. Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I hear exactly what you say right there. From someone with a little bit of experience on the planning commission, I spent two years on there and it is coming into a brand new, I'd say, would be harder than coming on city council, probably ten times harder. And I know Catherine, you sat through many, many, many meetings. And so you are aware of that as well as Don. I looked over there and it used to be Don Allen.
About to say something about age.
No, 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 no. Just that, you know, we know that, you know, it is a it is a heavier lift and in no disrespect to any other board member at all on boards or anything like that. I do think that it does have, there there is a lot of work that goes into it. And so I can respect the that kind of that continuity training. If it were to be that way, that it gets switched over, you know, you you still have that every year, having the possibility of years. We're not, you know, like you said, we could be reappointing or whoever the council is could reappoint the existing members and those type of things. And it is good for fresh blood. And I know when I got on on, you know, I was running against people that in the past had been wasn't current, but past members that before and and I don't know if that was a good thing or not, but led to being on city council. But anyway, I would be in favor of the two, 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 one, or whatever it was, as well knowing those things on there. And but I think there's also the point of, you know, the council can reappoint and should think about those things for the historical aspects or the ability so that because it's not, it's about with the planning commission, there is a lot of things that you have to get up to speed for. But you're you're on a clock. You're on this clock to go through. And so depending if we're busy sessions that, you know, we had big plans going through there every every night when we were on on the planning commission, Carl and I. And so that that can can put could play a heavier load as well on the whole process. Again, I think that's still up to the council to be able to point and do that. So I'd be in favor. Like that guy. For two, two, sorry, that's an inside joke from, I can't think of your name.
One last stab at it. I'm just telling you guys, you're weakening our council power and I just, I don't like, I just we're able to, we oversee the planning commission. It provides us the opportunity if there's issues with that body and I'm not seeing there's any current issues. I'm just saying, as you look down the road, it allows you to make significant changes to a body that this council may feel that they it needs to make down the road. And what you're doing by staggering it out is you're you're taking away our ability to make instant change onto a body like that. That's my concern. So you remember, because there were some board members not too long ago that I was constantly hearing complaints about from now city counselors that wanted to see changes being made, right? And I'm just saying this, when you have people coming to their ends of their terms and the ability for the council to make changes, this provides us more flexibility and power to make changes. That's the best where my head is. Yeah.
I mean, you make you make a good point. I would just want to clarify because I haven't been on the planning commission. So the current terms and three-year terms, is that correct with the way they're the new? Four.
They've always been.
Twenty-two.
About half changed every couple of years.
Okay, so for four years. And so we're chasing four out right now and then that I'll have to reapply. And then so we're four, three. What do we are the two years? When's the next?
Years you have.
Four or three, three, four.
It's basically just like council where you've got every two years, you've got, they're coming up.
So the one thing that I want to be real sensitive to is when we have volunteer people, I mean, these aren't paid people, they got to step up and then there's a reason I wasn't on planning commission is I didn't have the time to, you know, while I was raising a family. So I admire everybody who has dedicated that kind of time. I think we want to make it easy for people. I agree, we need some oversight. But I don't. Let's. It if I would like to understand the two, two, one better. Does that mean every year?
Every year, so so. Take us through it, Jeff. If you go two, two, one.
Under Chair Crosby's proposal, there would be at least one vacancy every every going forward, either two or one.
So it's either most years it's a two and.
Still for your still for your terms, just changing how they're staggered.
Just stagger them out. Get to do it more often. But you don't get to do it much.
So and that's kind of where I I see where Stan's saying on like change and and I agree with that, right? Like I'm someone that likes more, I want it now, right? And this, quite honestly, this is a struggle for me sometimes.
All right, now you're on.
So but with that being said, though, too, I still think you maintain some of that control, right? It's just going to be a little more staggered in in your approach, right? The reality of you have four people that aren't fitting your council's style that they want from the commission, right? You you can you can move two out and then two out later on. If you and even with the 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 status that we have now, you could very well have four people on there that you don't want and have to wait for a whole nother three and then another one. At least this way you can slowly factor in and change the the dynamics of the commission the way the council wants. This smaller, it's smaller.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
Yep, go ahead, Lauren.
So I I I I hear everything that you guys are saying. There there's a couple of things that I don't like about this two, two, one. First of all, I I think while if I'm understanding all of you guys correctly, we we like the idea of the ability to get some new people on planning commission. What I don't like about it is that every single year you're going to have the ability to put a new person on planning, which does not allow, in my opinion, the planning commission to ever work cohesively as a as a unit. You're never getting, you know, kind of like we do on council, we have a solid two years to work together before anybody's up for reelection. And I think that creates some continuity, gives people the ability to learn to work together. If every single year you're looking at putting a new person on planning, I I don't think you ever allow them to formulate that type of relationship.
And you're appointing like every day because because what was suggested earlier and maybe after thinking it through, we don't want to do it that way. But if we do this for all of the different advisory committees.
No, no.
Well, well, just saying, well, it was just, it was brought up as an idea to standardize it, right? So it's standard all the way through. Well, if it's standard, it's a two, two, one. We're we're constantly and we're volunteers too. We're constantly meeting to to approve, Carl.
Yeah, I the concern I had in the because I call them the judgment judge carefully judging about what that selection process is was not an advocate for the two, two, one. I guess I am still on the three and the four every couple of years. I guess that's where I'm kind of landing at for the reasons that Lori try not to be too long-winded here. Lori specified my thoughts on this. I remember sitting on those committee meetings up until very late at night and knowing what the background of that person was versus that lady all on the planning commission, knowing what their thoughts were and the way they say things meant certain things rather than having a brand new person on on the team. That's really important. On the other hand, I know that we've had some people on this planning commission that I would like to have seen them moved off. Now, I also want to be respectful because these are volunteers. They work long and hard at it. I do know they still study a lot. I'm aware of Chair Crosby's, his tenure has got to be twenty years.
Tremendous service.
Oh, my goodness, yes. He has put so much effort into it. I I want to be very respectful of those people's thoughts, abilities, and over the years, some real solid understanding, but new ideas are also important. So I want to make sure I just say that I I'm in favor of the three, four. I would not vote for two, two, one.
Jeff, yeah.
Mayor, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. Actually, the way it's currently set up and how the planning commission has operated for a long time. It's not every two years. It's actually cooked. Those cohorts are back to back. So we had three. We had three expire just last year and now there's four this year. So it's like three and then four and then nothing for three years. And then you go, does that make sense? I know I'm not explaining it well. Okay, so it's actually not every two years.
So it gives them time. So then.
They do have more time together.
They end up time together.
That's true.
For a couple of years.
I just wanted to make sure to clarify.
Except for that one.
Except for that one.
Kind of period of time where it really changed.
It's kind of what we do, quite honestly.
I think that there's a you know, having kind of just recently looked at, you know, applications for advisory boards and stuff, I think there's a, you know, a tendency to try to turn over the, you know, not turnover, but um you know, keep the existing members there if they're doing a good job and they know what they're doing and all that. And so, you know, I'm I guess I can go either way on this. Again, I'd like it to be consistent throughout all our boards, but I I do think that you know, if people take the time to go apply for stuff and then we end up just keeping the same two, you know, and they don't ever really, I mean, you know, of course, they're considered considered and interviewed and all that, but then like you said, it's it's probably a little bit less chance if you're trying to have that, keep some of that corporate knowledge in there. It might be harder for new folks to kind of break in, especially again, you know, when you're interviewing against somebody who's been doing it for twenty years versus you are, you know, don't know dittily about it. It's going to be a little hard to compete against that. And so I don't know, I can go either way on it, but I would like it to be consistent for the other committees.
Carl, to your point, just a little bit, I see what you're saying and I I fully agree on the beginning. Don't know. I mean, I've noticed even just being in the room with you guys, a significant difference, right? With that being said, though, I think it's important to realize this doesn't have to mean change. This doesn't have to mean that new people will be setting up here. This is just an opportunity for that. It also allows the volunteer the opportunity to kind of gracefully step out and say, hey, look, two years I did, I did my service. I'm good. I'm ready to walk, right? And and not have to leave early for what other things, right? So I think it's kind of a, it's a win-win, right? Nothing, nothing says that that person has to rotate out, that the person sitting to your left and right, that you can't get to know or anything. It's just if if they're not working out, it allows that opportunity. If somebody better comes along, it allows an opportunity. It just, in my opinion, I'm going to keep using the word opportunity because it creates more opportunity. It doesn't mean it has to change. Again, these aren't term limits that you're out into and nobody else and you can't stay there longer.
Well, as I understand the two, two, two and one, however that works out, doesn't reduce the number of years for the term. It only looks at how many people we look at every year. So there's that, but also it's it's in my mind, it's more than just skill. There is teamwork and some members don't do well on that team. And not that they're bad people, just sometimes people just do not get along. And as a council, I think that we need to look at those committees and say, you know, this team is not functional because of some personality issues. So let's pull some of those folks off. We put them in a different place, be respectful about because it's it is a volunteer process. It's not something we're getting paid and hopefully we'll do our job or we get fired. It's a it's a volunteer and they're spending time on their own away from their families. So what to me, it's a personality, it's a skill. And I know that when I first started, I can remember the first year I I was really struggling. My 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 background is planning, much like Catherine was when you were in the Forest Service. And it took me a while to figure out how to make all the pieces apart since all conversations work. It takes a while.
Who's feeling strong? I'm just going to do a quick straw poll. This isn't an actual though, but who's feeling really strongly on the five with a fourth, five, three, four, whatever that is.
Was two.
Four, three. He's feeling strongly that we need to go that direction on the four, three.
That's a stain.
I'm going to go to the, I'm going, I'm going to you wishy-washy. I don't need to be on this one. What was that? You're saying, yeah?
Yeah, they'll tell me.
You're feeling good, five, four, three?
Yeah, that's what.
That's the that is squawk.
But yeah, status quo. Who wants to status quo? I'm feeling good about status, but you're feeling good. All right, who's feeling really about the two, two, one? Really strong on the two, two, one. Okay. And then who's, who's wishy washy on?
Oh, I don't like the word wishing.
I'm sorry. I don't mean, I don't mean it as I, I don't, I apologize. I don't know where you're at. Don't know.
The status quo.
Okay, status, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean it.
Either, it could go either direction.
Okay, go any direction. All right.
I think some, okay.
And, and that. Another thing to remember is they're asking for this, right? Your commission has, your, your chair has written you a letter. And asked and requested this, right? I think that to me gives it, I mean, I think that's what pushes me over the edge. Yeah. Is the fact that it's not Rich Sheldon's idea. It's not Jordan Wheeler's idea, right? It's your, your planning commission's. Request to, to, to not go through the changeover that they potentially go through every three or four years.
So it'd be hard when you say that, you know, that I respect German.
And that's honestly what pushes me over the edge is they're asking for.
That's changeover.
And actually that hits me hard too, in because I know how much that the current board does for onboarding. New commissioners. And so, and I know that like, in, in, to your point, I think that's. And, and it's not necessarily for the whole commission. It was just, it, it's Jerry who, who, uh. I guess have a lot of respect for, were sitting on the board with him, but just in general, I believe he does an amazing job. Um, of that and understanding what it takes to onboard as well. But to your point, Rich, I, I think, I guess I would say I'm heavily, more heavily onto what has been requested.
Good question. Um, so if that two, 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 one was to go forth. Who decides what the two people are up for this year?
Yeah.
How's that decide?
I think we need to.
Why we need to stay the same?
Little tight schedule. I think we're going to make decisions.
But if y'all were talking about needing to make some changes on some individuals, whatever. And so, you know.
Right.
Jordan. Uh, the answer, I think, based in, I think you would appoint people to, to your term and start that process.
Do you start at one or do you, you know, what?
It would be complicated.
Yeah.
I guess. Well, in, in response to Rich's question, I guess I'm curious, is this just the chairman wanting these changes or does the whole planning commission want this change?
In the letter, in the letter, it does, it does reference that. It feels like there's, there's. Many more planning commissioners who think the same way, but they're. Normal though.
Didn't sign it.
Yeah, they didn't sign it or take any.
Right. Cause I didn't pick, I guess I, 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 I mean, I didn't like. Read, read the memo. I skimmed through it, but I didn't pick up on that. So that was, that was my.
Beginning of the memo, he, he makes a comment that it's his words, but others may feel the same way.
No, I, I can speak to, there, there's some email exchange in which others, and, and I, I apologize that I wasn't expecting that question. To see who chimed in, who didn't. It's not just Jerry. That fills out.
Is it a majority? I guess is, is what I'm asking.
I hope not over email.
Yeah. So, so maybe, maybe we table this and get more information.
Mayor, can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, we have four spots that are already advertised that we're going to be interviewing for, right? That's not changing. It doesn't sound like whether we change this term or not.
It sounds like we need to proceed and then maybe decide if we.
It, it does feel like.
Yeah.
That, that we need to move ahead with. The, I mean, is. Maybe I'm alone on that, but it seems like the only, the only real thing we can do right now without causing a huge disruption is proceed with the four.
Neither way, either way, you're going to correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, either way, you're going to run four spots, right? Cause there's four people up. We're not going to extend two peoples. Our service or anything like that, right?
I think that's a fair statement.
So, yeah, so I mean, what, there, there's a, I mean, a structure could look the same, so.
All right. So, 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 so let's do this. Okay. Let's move forward with the appointment process.
Yeah.
The only reason we're talking about a two, 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 one or whatever is because it was proposed in the letter. Let's allow our staff to go back and see if that is the best format proposal for it and how, if it is, how we do it, right? And, and report back, but I don't think we have to make that decision tonight. So let's table that decision. Uh, let's move forward with the appointment process that we have to do now and then come together and, and put together a term. Process for our planning commission moving forward. Does that sound like an agreeable bill for everybody?
And I think they're assuming that, you know, they're all going to, you know, we're going to have four new ones, which is probably not a very valid assumption.
Think it is either, yeah.
Um, that's why we put wise people on the selecting committee to understand that.
So I, I know we want to move off, but just one more question. So we give staff direction is on uniform, uh, uniforming it through all of our. Committees because, you know.
No way. Okay.
So, so the planning commission is.
It's unique.
It's unique. So I think it can have its own section in the code.
Yeah. And, and my other thing with not wanting to do it uniformly throughout all of the is. Um, boards is we don't always have all those seats fill, whereas on planning, they're always full.
That's. Valid.
It is.
Yeah.
I can remember putting people in those seats that were really shaky too.
All right, let's move ahead. Um, Trenton, did you have more? All right, all right. Uh, committee and counselor reports done.
Hey, just wanted to tee up. We've had some really good ongoing discussions with the aquatics committee staff and the pool, uh, exploratory task force. And with your permission, mayor, we'd like to bring the task force in to do a preliminary kind of update, not a final report, but just an update, what they've done, what they've learned. Get any, answer any questions, get any additional direction from staff. Would like to do that on our next meeting.
A new visual. Okay. So you want it in the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, all right, uh, whether it's work, whether do you care if it's work session or a meeting?
No, it could be either. I, I, I think, you know, if we could give them 20 minutes, maybe 15, 20 minutes for questions and answers.
Uh, you got my commitment to that. Uh, we'll just sit or maybe we'll talk and figure out if it makes more sense in a work session or a council meeting. They have my commitment on it.
Very good. Thank you. Other than that, you've heard enough from me today. So thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh, highly support what Dawn just said about the idiots. Just, uh, there's a lot of good people on that committee and, uh, we've got some good ideas. I'd like to see that. Introduced to the council. Uh, really excited. I buy some stuff at Ace Hardware Store to take the cut, plug in a local restaurant across the street. I noticed.
Ace's there.
I don't either.
My goodness. Uh, nothing wrong with that. My kids. Across the street. Let me finish this up, but get on to other people. Uh, I noticed the roof was going up on the Smith building. Just excited as can be about. Seeing that thing not go down into rubble. I, I really give that person a just a wholehearted pat on the back. Go forward and hopefully you can make that thing happen. I'm excited about seeing the Smith building being moved forward on something. I was involved in the, I'm sure that Kathleen will talk more about this, but the Parks and Recreation Committee. Some really highly skilled people in that list. I appreciate work from, um. Sarah on that one, Sarah Richardson. She did a great job of getting those folks together on that. So I'm really very pleased about that. PGE is doing a lot of stuff on the road. What, what's going on there? I. Do we know what's happening with PGE at the moment on a proctor?
Okay.
You know.
It's PG. It's, it's five feet from my desk.
It's, it's, it's PG because they've got a whole line of traffic closed down today.
They, they have lines closed and it's very difficult for me to get into my office this morning and I noticed they're up and down the street. We don't know what's going on.
Last time they did this, they're running a new whatever line out to forward, but they forgot to tell the city.
Yeah.
It wasn't until we asked later that they did any.
Sounds like three years ago.
Yeah, let's find out, let's find out. And with that.
Um, as Lee is on to the library board, we met, um, this last month and they were kind of, uh, working on their strategic plan update. And they were having the discussion of whether or not they should do one or not. And they basically kind of decided to not proceed with updating their existing strategic plan because. The implementation of the one they had has been kind of halted by COVID the last year and a half, and it would be difficult to develop new strategies while COVID issues are. Still affecting attendance and participation. Um, they also discussed the need for additional space at the library, mostly for programs. And the outcome of that was that we kind of discussed the need to ensure that the library director is very involved in the discussion of space needs. Associated with any potential new community center at the community campus. So that seems like the best way to kind of address that need. I too am thrilled beyond belief to hear about Rochelle's appointment as our new Parks and Recreation Director. I think with that, with our Parks and Trails master plan finalized, the imminent, um, code that we're going to adopt to be able to implement it. The progress that we're making on the, um, community campus, the hiring of Rochelle and the ability to kind of consolidate our parks, trails and rec programs. Into kind of one department. We're just laying all these puzzle pieces in place. And I just finally see there, that whole program kind of coming together. Um, for the future of our community and our residents. So she's got a great team of employees to work with. And I think, um, I expect great things from her and I'm going to be her biggest advocate and supporter on the council. So really, um, excited.
Awesome. Rich.
Yeah. Well, Chris stole my, uh, chamber thunder with her, uh, trick or treat trail, but thank you for all that work and it's exciting. And I, I know my kids will be looking forward to that this year. Um, the other thing is, uh, the, uh, so done with the planning commission, we won't discuss that anymore today. And then the last thing is though, um, homeless task force. So we met last week. Um, I believe we're right there at the, at the cusp of a, of an ordinance that we'll bring in front of you. Um, we'd like to get a, a work session or something, um. Forward to discuss, uh, that as well as. Um, some other, um. Responses, um, in regards to personnel and also, um, RVs and that, and we want to. Tackle that problem.
Thank you. Um, Lori.
All right. Uh, well, real quick on the, the parks, uh, interviews, uh, like the two previous counselors said, those went great. And for the first time in three years, I think we're going to have all seven seats on the parks board full at one capacity or another. So that's super exciting. Um, I would like to, uh, in regards to the homeless, uh, nest task force, I'd like to give some kudos to F Officer, uh, Jeff Ari Bright. Who's kind of taken this under his wing and has been making contact with a lot of these individuals. Uh, including people in RVs that have been over in Champion for the last week. So I noticed a couple of those gone tonight. So that's fantastic. And, uh, that's all I got. Thanks.
Yeah.
Jeremy. All right. We had our economic development, uh, meeting here, um. Two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, whatever it was. Um, it was a really good meeting. We had invited Elliot, uh. Weiss, Wees, uh, I don't know how to say his last name from community, uh, attributes. Um, it was a company, we asked him to come and speak to the, the group about what is involved in doing an economic development master plan. Um, in that process, um, he came with a lot of, you know, definitions and what goes through with this. Um, and Stan was there as well, um, in, you know, uh. By the end of it, you know, I think we're pretty all excited, but in that master plan, how much it kind of just. Fits in, uh, together with, um, the comp plan that's going about, right? And so how that gets and how other communities have taken. There, uh, and use that within building the comp plan, um, and vice versa. And it really works well. In going in one direction. For instance, if you build this prior to the comp plan. So that if you build a cop land, but yet your master plan didn't fit, you know, you build your, you know, so it's, it's that whole hoping to build that. Um, that complaint from coming out of that. Um, and so I don't know, Stan wants to.
I think one example that was given was, you know, our economic development strategic plan says there's a huge opportunity for growth in the industrial manufacturing space, right? Yeah, our comp plan doesn't have any industrial land, right? So it's matching up those goals and things that we want to do with our economic development. Into our, you know, our land development and our planning and stuff with our comp and really does go together and kind of overlay one another. And. It sounds like a lot of the companies you work with do both and kind of, or maybe they're used to working together. So I think the overall point I took is what Jeremy's communicating as well is this, it's very holistic. And that I think as a council, the stuff we need to really look at trying to give staff the direction for a holistic approach to the comp plan and. And the economic development strat, strategic plan.
Yeah. If you don't mind chiming in here, um, so, you know, we're, we're in negotiations right now with a, a company on the call plan, uh, and we're. Meeting with them about scope. And it's actually, it just kind of brings up a question that, you know, we have these. Goals, city council goals of doing the call plan update and the second economic development strategy is part of a scope for comprehensive plan update. Um, or write a company, you can, we, we can engage them about doing the economic development.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, opportunities, you know, analysis or strategy is part of the, the work, you know, we're going to have to update our housing needs analysis. Um, there's going to be a big long, you know, visiting process is part of, you know, the people for the complaint and all that. But it seems almost like. Instead of having these, you know, two efforts running parallel, you know, do another R or something, maybe we start with like, hey. You know, can we incorporate, we include that as part of the scope and we have the budget, you know, through the, uh, we have the funding through the budget for the economic development plan. And the comp plan. So we just merge those, maybe we can.
Yeah, I like, this individual had pointed out that sometimes you'll have this company that does this because, you know, they're not. This company and this company don't fully do what each other do, but they partner together.
Sub.
Yeah, kind of sub and then work and then share some of those costs when doing the public meetings and outreach and. You know, there's things that we want to do and, and how we want to do those things as well. It was very, uh, educational, um, and in that aspect. Uh, this particular company had, uh, stories and things, um, from local thing, you know, McMinnville and Astoria and, and others around, uh, the, of the region. So. Um, yeah, it was a, a good, uh, good, uh. Minder of what we can do to help leverage other ideas that we're doing at the same time. Um, the, uh. No, no one's brought up the fireworks, but it's coming.
I'm ready for it.
Okay.
Flyer here and everything. Now I lost it. So I'm glad you brought it up.
I was like, I wasn't going to bring it up because everyone else was going to mention it. I won't say anymore because I don't want to. Still, uh, Stan's light show. Is big bang.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll let him speak more of that, but it's coming up. And hope, uh, I, I like the idea. Actually, I was thinking about this, you know, for the Fourth of July, you know, we get the bank, uh, that sponsors it and we get the school that, you know. But how neat is it to have out of season? So my wife is from Toledo, Oregon, and I probably never heard of it or where it's located. It's right outside Newport. They never did a Fourth of July. Firework show. They always did it like at the end of July, still hot, warm, sunny. Uh, but they always got their fireworks for like, you know, a fifth of the price.
That sounds like Mary Cross.
And it. And I tell you, it, it is not a, uh, it, I've never been to a better firework show. Because they get everything so darn cheap and it's, and it's quite the, quite the event. Um, anyways. But that being said, I mean, how fun and what other community can say after the football game, we're going to be doing, I mean, I think maybe in future years, but you can have other people sponsoring. I was talking to my wife, you know, unless Schwab could sponsor one or, you know, Chevrolet or whatever, you know, and maybe a fraction of the cost because it's not at. Those times. So something to think about in the future. So we'll see how this one goes and turns out.
Disney World does it every night.
I know, I thought that too, but it's Disneyland. I was like, man, I wonder what their cost. They have them on staff though. Um, anyway, um. Oregon Connections is a conference that's coming up. It's next week. Um, I'm actually moderating the last session of that, um, on public policy for broadband and. Um, with, um, and, and then all the ARPA funding and different opportunities that the state of Oregon has. We'll have some state senators on the, the group and panel, uh, but that's coming up. In a, uh, week and a half or next week. Um, supply chain issues. We have, uh, I know we talked about this before. I brought it up. Man, every single podcast I listen to on the way back and forth from work last week was it? We are seeing a huge supply chain thing out that where I work across the board and, uh, things are just getting crazy. I know you guys all know this, but. I think when we talked about it before, being wise, what we're trying to do and other public, uh, sectors as well as like trying to. You don't want to have a lot on stock, but you can't afford not to have something on stock if there's cleaning supplies or these type of things. Um, and so just making sure that the city is well positioned, uh, because this isn't going to just end in January.
Have you tried to get your hands on a generator recently?
No, I haven't, but, uh, I, you know, everything from, I mean, literally I'm buying like the last computer models in the entire. Country, you know, for things and four lap and rip and buy it, right? Like it's, this is a real problem and. Country, you know, for things, and four lap and rip and buy it, right? Like, it's, this is a real problem, and, and so. We have such a broad spectrum of things we purchase, you don't wanna be, you know, not smart about what we purchased, but I just wanna make sure we're. We don't get caught into situations where we don't have enough supply of something for the police department, or public works, or chlorine, or wherever it may be. So, um, something to think about, so, anyways, that's all I.
All right, thank you, um, all right, so first ARPA funds, American Recovery Funds, I've, uh, it's one thing, and, uh, Jordan and I were talking about. It's why I was still thinking coming down, this is, I just, you guys, I really don't wanna be one of these, uh, public entities that they say, you know, we try to stimulate. The economy after a pandemic and recession, but those local governments just wouldn't really release the money and spend the money. I, 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 that is not right, you know, it's something that's just been a chip on my shoulder, being kind of around government processes and stuff for a while. And I wanna be smart, we got to get stewards of the money, gotta be smart with it, I know that we're watching the infrastructure stuff going on nationally, and. That keeps getting the cam kicked down the road and everything, and now it's looking like December, January for that, and so I don't wanna jump the gun either, but. The reason those funds are out there is to help, help out our community, to help, to help recover, to help, you know, help our, our local businesses. Get back on their feet, to help folks that are maybe having a hard time making payments for, you know, utilities or different things to get going, or. Just, you know, it to find those problems that we didn't even know in Congress passes, you know, that we're gonna be out there for us to be nimble at the local level. And to find those problems and to plug those holes, and, and so I just don't wanna be one of these, uh, these groups that, you know, if we hold on to this money. And we spend it on something like three years from now, well, that's great, but guess what? That's not what that money's for. That money is to help recover, you know, out of this pandemic, and there can be long lasting projects like roadways and infrastructure that have both. Short term and long term benefits, but we, we, you know, I just, I, I, I do get concerned that we haven't really been actively talking about. What we're going to be doing with those funds and creating programs for those funds, because that is what that money is there to do. Um, and so if you kind of agree with me, I, I, that'd be great, please reach out, let me know, maybe talk to staff about it, I'm put, I'm pushing to get that work session up. For us to really be putting together plans and talk about how spending it, but I do think we kind of need to get on the go, you know, with that a little bit. But in a smart, thoughtful way that doesn't waste it and get too far in front of it. Um, I mentioned earlier, uh, Senator Merkley's office contacting us today about the billion dollars in appropriations to go towards your wastewater. Um, awesome, uh, that's just the beginning though, you guys, uh, you know, the billion dollars was kind of the cap for, you know, what they're able to appropriate like that. But the rest is going at the agency level, and I do think that we need to get some dialogue going with PAC West or the government relations firm. And guys like Dan Mar, who's our representative out of Senator Merkley's office, and start kind of identifying, maybe Ray Arvidage, who's that. Our contact with Senator Wyden's office as well, and start kind of talking about, you know, where, where's, where are these funds gonna go? How are they gonna be allocated, how we can kind of, you know, get in front of, you know, the line to be able to get some of this stuff, so. I don't know if we need a full work session to do that, I think I'm gonna work with Jordan and Jeff and Dan Mar and PAC West to try to maybe get a meeting together. If you'd like to participate in something like that, please let me know, I'm totally open minded to having other people there, um, uh, we're not looking to. Um, propose or do anything good for the city that, that anyone here doesn't know about, it's literally gonna be like wastewater, water infrastructure type stuff. Where, where do we go to get that money, you know, so, uh, so that's that, I, I wanna mention the fireworks. October twenty ninth, Friday night after the football game, um, should be pretty exciting, should be a lot of fun for the high school kids and families. I've heard a lot about it on social media, to your point, there's just something kind of special and cool about fireworks when you're not supposed to have them. And so thanks to our city staff and everyone for kind of working to figure that out, and, um, uh, looking forward to it. And, Jordan, were you able to figure out much more after our conversation today about what the Board of Commissioners, Clackamas Board of Commissioners did this week?
Yeah, I pulled up their, their report and, uh, presentation, uh, part of that, I think that was like on the, the seven, six or seven. Um, they would do that, maybe they had a follow up session, but.
Uh, well, I'll set up real quick, so I just, I got a little concerned, Jordan, maybe you'll make me feel better. But so, uh, Board of Commissioners in Clackamas County want to incentivize the house, right? Uh, but one thing they're incentivizing for developers of multi, multifamily living facilities and stuff. Is to incentivize them to do it in unincorporated lands of Clackamas County. And where I get concerned, especially in like C two and commercial type lands, well, we have commercial lands, and we were just spent a lot of time talking about tonight. That some of it's not necessarily all annexed in to our community, right? So what ha, I, I'm just, and, and again, I, I've asked Jordan to research more about it, cuz I don't know a lot about it, but my concern would be. Is if you have a property that butts like right up against our urban growth boundary or community, that is built without our, the correct collection of SDC funds. And stuff to go towards pedestrian sidewalks and water collection and sewer and everything else, is this really what we, do we need to be advocating against this? You know, where we have developers right on the edge of our community, you know, pumping up these properties, so I reached out to Jordan and said, can you look into this a little bit for us? You know, to see kind of what's happening here, if this is something we need to be concerned about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll verify it from, from what I've read, seen, it, it only applies to the urban zones, uh, within the urban corporate area of Clackamas County. Which is really the close thing, like adjacent Milwaukee, last town. Commercial and multifamily, um, mixed use zones along their major cur, commercial, commercial corridors, so. I think the zoning that's applied out to the unincorporated part of the county east, out here, uh, it's not on their map of where that, those strategies apply, but.
Strategies.
Yeah.
Apply, but, I mean, honestly though, could somebody, could it develop, a prospector, you know, developer? You know, go into a commercial, i- i- it would be, what, it would be, uh, rural C two or whatever, property outside.
The proposals are actually some changes and amendments to their components and planning, and. A lot more uses within those only designation, so I don't believe so, that's what I wanna verify though, but even if they did, and we talked a little bit about that. I mean, you still have the burden of that, of, you know, getting infrastructure like water, wastewater to, you know. Developments, which I think is, uh, away from their intent of what they're trying to achieve, right, it's like. Uh, with these proposed changes, you know, for increasing housing supplies and things like that, but it's the urban areas, so.
All right, well, I guess my over message is, we gotta be careful, uh, with all the house stuff going on and the incentivizing and, and all this stuff. Yeah, you know, just, we gotta be careful.
Where used to be, uh, Clamety James, well, that, that's probably one of the pieces of property that you'd be thinking about to be on that list.
Well, sure, but you also, like, wh- when I go, when, when I go out to like the Skipper, I mean, it wasn't the Skipper family and all that. I mean, we've just gotten more of that all annexed in, but I don't, there, there's still a lot between, tell me if I'm wrong, I think there's still a lot between like that new space age. And.
In this way?
Yeah.
There are requirements in, in, um, for things that are in our urban growth boundary. In our urban, urban earth growth boundary that, um, requires the notification in, in working with the cities of those urban growth boundaries and expansions of that. I guess my concern is, and this may be a pet peeve, I know it was when I was on C four, a lot of the city's pet peeves is. You can, in the county too, at that time, you can't make Oak Grove become a city in that area.
Right.
But it should be a city, it looks like a city, but it's not a city, but it takes all the county tax dollars to go into that area to keep, keep. The county keeping now, it sounds like infusing more into that area, um, and try to incentivize them to become their own city. Versus, so they aren't sucking all the tax dollars out of, say, Welch's.
Right.
Um, for, uh, services that, uh, they should be providing in that area. That's what gets me more than, cuz that's where I think Jordan's right, as far as insiders, urban growth boundary, I think there's levers. And Jordan should check on that, um, that they are not, they would have to work with insider constraints, um, like. Royal Lane or whatever, but then right outside of our urban growth boundary is the Clamety James area, which is a commercial. Or Furwood up there, and those type of things, so, but anyway, I, I think it's something definitely.
Yeah.
To be apprised of, and.
All right, well, that's what I had, let's, uh, get excited for fireworks on Friday night, and, uh, thanks everybody for your participation in the meeting.